May I rise, please? Before we begin, I'd like to recognize two citizens who have recently passed away. One is William Smokey Greenwood, a 30-year employee of the Department of Public Works for the city. He served admirably in ways that most of us appreciate but never even see being done. And the second, Yolanda Zanni Collins, just 38 days shy of her 100th birthday. She had been a sixth-grade teacher at the Kelly School and then taught at the NOK before her retirement, beloved by many and hopefully remembered by all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Would you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
It's the roll call for the City Council meeting of December 9th. Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tanta.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Ragaman.
Here.
Counselor Junten.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien is absent. Counselor Connell.
Present.
One absent, ten present. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Very well. Do we have any late-file items?
The councilors will see on their desk, we have two items. We have language, new language for the preservation restriction, which is Order 161. And then you'll see language for Ordinance 44 on your desk also.
Very well. Accept the late-file items. Moved in second to accept the late file discussion, hearing none. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they'll be taken up in regular order. Public comment period, please. Okay, we have 13 people who wish to testify. Let me say that we're going to be pretty strict about limiting you to two minutes each. If you use less time than that, we would thank you. If someone says something that you've heard previously from another speaker, just say, "I agree with that person." And that'll get us to the agenda tonight and get everyone home earlier than they might otherwise be having to linger here. So the first name here is Tina Wasserman. Please identify yourself and your street address if you would like.
I'm sorry?
Identify yourself and...
My name is Tina Wasserman. I live at 20 Russia Street. I've lived there for 20 years. And I'm asking the City Council to consider a discounted rate for residents to park in the garage during a snowban. Anecdotally, my neighbor, who's over 60, went to park there. We were told by the DPW, by the way, that we could park there. I have the name of the woman who I spoke to, but I don't want to disclose her name right now because I don't want to get anyone in trouble. So there was a bit of misunderstanding. She went. I didn't go, so this is anecdotal. It cost her $50 for two days. I called Portsmouth, a sister city nearby, for the Hanover Garage. First of all, their policy is all residents are allowed to park in the indoor garages two hours before a snowban and two hours after. Foundry parking is $3 and Hanover is $5. So my neighbor, spending $50, spent 15 times the amount that they do in Portsmouth. She also said it was empty, and I don't think there are any tourists coming to Newburyport during a snowstorm. She also inquired about monthly passes, and they have been sold out. So thank you. Thank you.
I'm sure the Parking Advisory Committee listened closely to that. Marilyn Evans.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday and the councilors. My name is Marilyn Evans, and I live at 41 Virginia Lane in Newburyport. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the vote that was taken on November 5th of this year in reference to marijuana. And I'd like to make a request that all of the City Councilors please approve the removal of the zoning for the retail marijuana shops, to approve the removal of the tax for the retail marijuana sales, to approve the prohibition of retail marijuana shops in the City General Ordinance, and lastly, vote to approve the language on the current ballot, on the new ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being concise. Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. I'd just like to not be remiss ever and say thank you so, so much for all the hours of meetings, talking to residents, answering emails and all the things that you do. I think sometimes in the haste of all the business that you do, we forget to say thank you for all that time. So I don't like times like this to go by. And I'm sad to see some of you will not be back in the January session, and I look forward to meeting some of the new people. And so again, thank you so much for volunteering to serve and to take your time. I greatly, greatly appreciate it. And I can't believe it, but I'm going to be saying, "Have a very happy holiday, and I'll see you in 2020." So have a wonderful, happy new year. And again, I look forward to seeing all of you, and many thanks.
Same to you. I believe it is Nick Nado. It could be Nicole.
It is Nicole.
I'm sorry, there's an O missing.
It's called Nick. You can call him Nick.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Nicole Nado. I live at 6 Bain Lane. I also want to say thank you. I wanted to say especially thank you to all of you for giving us the opportunity to have so many discussions around marijuana in our city. I personally feel really heard by all of you, and more than anything, and no matter what the decisions are, that's the true wonderful thing about a democracy. So thank you for all of your time. There were a few points I wanted to make in asking you to honor the vote that happened on November 5th. I want you to take in mind that the vote that happened on the 5th doesn't have to be a final vote, but we don't have to be early adopters in our city. We can wait and see what the right way is to do, to move forward with marijuana sales if that's what the population wants to do in the future. So I'd like you to take that under advisement. Some of what I heard in the newspaper and in some of the debates, oftentimes people were talking about, sort of drawing corollaries to the sale of, the legal sale of alcohol and the legal sale of marijuana. And I do want to point out that according to Washington Post survey that was done, or I'm sorry, it was a research article that they published in 2017, 13% of Americans have an alcoholic, are alcoholics, are defined as alcoholics in the United States. I don't think that anybody wants that. Nobody's saying like, "Oh, by having legalized alcohol sales, we're condoning alcoholism." But I do want to point out that it's a problem, and we don't need to create future problems with other substances in our country. And the last thing that I wanted to say was that I feel like the vote that happened, there was a very large sort of public cry in both directions. People had a chance to speak, as I mentioned before, and we voted. And so I'd ask you to honor that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Jason.
Al Jason for Warren Street. I thank you for giving the chance to speak. I also am asking the councilors to please honor the vote. My comments revolve more around the technicalities of the vote and some of the comments I've heard afterwards. I was surprised to read Saturday morning's paper where councilpeople said they expected more debating this issue. We debated this for nine months, and I applaud the council for the way they handled this. I was here last spring when no fewer than 30 people had a chance to get up and express their opinions upon it. We didn't rush the vote. We didn't have it on Labor Day weekend. We had it in conjunction with the general election. So everyone had ample time to write letters to the newspaper, to talk to their friends and neighbors, to put up yard signs. So there was absolutely nothing, to use the word that some people have used, nefarious about this vote. I heard a comment by one of our elected officials about fear mongering. There was nothing fearful about this, and I didn't see any of the young ladies behind me here threatening voters at the ballot box or anything like that. One of the councilpeople made comments that the failure for opt-out to file the election on time can have an impact on the vote. And I say this respectfully, I'm not being a wise guy, but I just cannot imagine a scenario where that is accurate. Can anybody imagine someone standing at the ballot box thinking, "How should I vote on this vote pro on retail marijuana? Wait a minute, opt-out did not file on November 1st. They filed on November... That's it, I'm changing my mind." I mean, I just can't imagine that happening. And then the last comment involved money. Some people have been questioning the legitimacy of vote because of money. And I think almost everyone in this room knows the real money is coming from the pro-pot lobby. Money is streaming into the state. If you read the news, you know that the mayor of Taunton was recently arrested for taking bribes of hundreds of thousands of dollars from the pot lobby. The district attorney of Massachusetts, the district attorney of Massachusetts says she's now going to investigate every single deal that cities and towns have cut with the local pot retailers. I mean, this kind of business is just ripe for corruption. And I really think that we avoided a landmine by going the direction we did. So again, I appreciate your support in this, and please honor the vote of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Preston.
Hi, Connie Preston, 18 Atwood Street. At a recent committee meeting, I was forced to sit quietly while several councilors characterized the actions of the opt-out group and the Vote No political action committee, painting them with the same broad strokes. As a treasurer of the Vote No group, I bristle at this comparison, so it is important for me to lay out a few of the facts publicly. It is true that both groups are out of compliance. As a treasurer of the Vote No, no, it is my fault, and I am embarrassed by the fact that we missed the filing deadline by one day. My transgression is failing to realize that City Hall closes at 4:00 p.m. on Mondays instead of 5:00 p.m. I was here at 4:10 and devastated to find the doors locked. I was at City Hall early the next morning, filed the paperwork to form a committee and reported our expenses as is required by the law because it was the right thing to do. Our filing was a full week before the election. The opt-out group also filed the paperwork late. However, in contrast to the Vote No committee, the leader of the group filed the paperwork nine minutes before the close of City Hall the day before the election. Nine minutes before the close of City Hall the day before the election. Also in contrast to the Vote No group, the paperwork was a notice that they would not be forming committee and would not be reporting their expenses as required by the law, since they filed something they were clearly aware of the filing requirement and wantonly chose not to be in compliance. It is important to point out that the leader of their group and the person that signed the paperwork is a lawyer, someone that ostensibly understands the law. I am trained as a biochemist and would not at all characterize myself as someone who is familiar with the intricacies of political finance law. But I was able to quickly figure out what needed to be done, how to be done, thanks to the city clerk and the Secretary of State's office. I filed paperwork, formed a committee, and reported our expenses, and I did it because it was lawful and the right thing to do, and that's important to me. At the committee meeting on November 26th, we pointed out that a mailer was sent by opt-out that was ultimately proven to be paid for, excuse me, by Newburyport.com. The same meeting, we heard that opt-out, for the first time, from the opt-out group, for the first time, that yet another business, Children's Healthcare, paid for the billboard on Route 1. At the end of the day, the result of the election will not change, and I truly do not want it to be. My voice is no more important than the majority of the vote in Newburyport, and I really am not at all asking for the vote to be changed in any way. However, I, along with many others, will always wonder if we had really, truly understood the finances on Election Day, if the vote would have been different. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison Ballantyne.
Allison Ballantyne, 6 Hart Road. Good evening. Thanks to everyone for being here. I had my first forage into politics or politicking during the opt-out movement. I hung signs on doors and talked to people at church and practiced listening and trying to hear others' opinions. It was a great experience. And my 15-year-old daughter watched the entire thing, and our college kids would call and say, "Oh, what's going on?" So I'm just imagining trying to explain to them why the City Council didn't honor the vote of the people. And so I have full thought and respect that you are going to honor the desire that was portrayed in the vote by the people of the opt-out movement. Our children are watching us for how our democracy is carried out and how it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Brennan.
Hi, Tim Brennan, 26 Alberta Avenue. I wanted to thank you all for allowing the vote to take place to begin with. I think there was a lot of debate. I know people have different opinions and different personal feelings on the issue, but I think the way you all handled that over the last several months with respect was nice to see, and I think it sent a good message to the voters. I think the voters were well-educated. We know there were two groups that were leading the efforts. I think for the most part, they were also respectful and spent their time trying to just make their points known. So I think there's no question that the citizens of Newburyport all had enough information to make an educated vote. I obviously came down on the side of banning the retail pot shops, and I was glad that was the result. But I think there was a lot of knowledge, a lot of respect for the most part, again, starting with a demonstrated respect among you all. So I just hope we continue that respectfulness and respect and honor the vote that came out on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I believe it's Cadel?
Kane.
Kane, okay. Thank you.
Close. You all know me at this point. Matt Kane, Six Three Cars on Mel Road.
I should know you by now, so...
Yeah, sorry for having this written down. I just jodsted.
Yep, yep.
We all know 37% of the voters came out, they put their faith in the system of government that allows them to vote and then go back to work, right? Most people don't have time or couldn't imagine it necessary to then go and beg for that vote to count, as though this was some sort of kangaroo court. So I just echoed what everyone else, most other people have said tonight, that this is important to put forward. In some recent committee meetings, some of you had suggested they would hit the pause button on this, hang your hat on alternative facts regarding supposed campaign finance indiscretions. These are false accusations. They're put forth by the other side with no basis at all, other than a late filing, which they also acknowledge they were late on. And it made me kind of just look at this whole campaign financing a little bit deeper. And at least five councilors in this room filed late.
Seven.
Now, we didn't know and they didn't know that we were rookies at this, but I got to imagine that you guys know what to do. Some of you have been doing this for years, right? I looked at the reports, and to be frank, there's absolutely possible indiscretions. The largest, I think quite frankly, the largest single contribution to any of your campaigns came from somebody who owns a pot shop, right? I'm not here to name names, but, you know, look in the mirror, right? You know, as I stated before, it's time to go back to work. Counselor Vogel, in one of the committee meetings, you made an analogy to football.
Excuse me?
Like you felt like you were going to spike the ball.
You will address the council as a body through the chair without identifying members. I object. I'm sorry. You're out of order, sir. You're out of order. Let me reiterate, there are lots of issues that garner a lot of public attention, and sometimes they're accompanied by strong feelings. What we try to do is collect public comment and testimony on the matter at hand, without pointing fingers, without accusation, and certainly without impugning the intentions or the honor of the councilors who have been elected to serve you. And I'm going to be very strict about that. Anybody who addresses a counselor by name is out of here. Lynn Scow.
Lynn Scow, 75 High Street. I have come here to ask the council to affirm the decision of Newburyport voters to opt out of retail marijuana in our city. I also spoke today with Kathleen O'Connor-Ives, who unfortunately could not be here today, and she asked me to convey to you her hope that the council will effectuate the will of the voters to opt out. The complaints of the opt-in crowd are nothing but a distraction to the business of this council. As you've heard, not only were they late filing their campaign finance report, they actually also missed their 30-day post-election filing, which is applicable to ballot committees. We made ours at the same time. Many here or others also were late filers, and it has nothing to do with this issue. It is yet another attempt by the same group, along with other members of our local government and the Daily News, to dismiss, harass, defame, intimidate, and bully us as they seek to oppose their will of the minority. We've been accused of being just moms and just private school parents. We've been called Paw Patrol parents, right-wing Republicans, fear mongers, and a vocal minority, all before there was even a decision to have a ballot. We've been accused of keying a counselor's car. We've been accused of daring to align with the school committee on advocating for anti-vaping education, illegally placing signs needing a sweep of the community, which of course found none, and that wasn't reported in the news. We were accused of writing the confusing ballot question, and lastly, we were called a threat to democracy. We are none of these things. We are Newburyport residents, the majority of them. We are law-abiding, productive members of this community, and we are your constituents. We are democracy in action. We are not the threat to democracy. We are the people that elected you to represent us, and we ask that you effectuate what we voted to do, and what we voted to think is right for our community, and we ask that you effectuate our desire to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Baumfeld, Baumfeld, I believe it is. I apologize for watching your name.
Thank you, thank you. Also, Josh Baumfeld, 75 High Street. I just wanted, I really just want to reiterate what most people said. I think that people are upset about what our group spent on this campaign. I think what you should be enraged about is the $6.5 million that the pot industry spent on Question 4 in 2016. They basically essentially wrote the legislation after writing the ballot question. And that legislation, and what you should be enraged about, is that it basically marginalized our local governance, which we all agreed upon. It took away your ability to really legislate locally. And I think you should not be upset or about a concerned group of citizens in Newburyport that decided to basically fight the power of the marijuana industry. Just lastly, the whole, I heard the comment that we're a threat to democracy, and I would say our group is all about democracy. None of us are really political. None of us really have run campaigns. We've never been part of campaigns. We don't have a particular ideology. The group really mirrors the citizenry in party demographics of the city, and most of them are Democrats. We're doctors and PhDs and lawyers and business owners and company CEOs and coaches, and we're youth league board members and volunteers, former NEF board members, et cetera. We're just Newburyport like everybody else. The quote-unquote "campaign" we ran wasn't meant to be a campaign in the usual sense. We were just appalled that, we felt like we weren't being treated well initially, that this legislation allowed us to have a vote, and many other cities and towns had the vote, and we had to fight and claw just to be given our right to have a vote. All we did in this campaign was we drove record numbers of people to the poll in a non-mayoral, non-presidential election. And just as was predicted by Dr. Sue, who's an epidemiologist and expert in statistics, she looked at the real data of the towns that opted in last year and those that were given the right to, I'm sorry, the towns that voted to legalize, and then they had an opportunity to opt in or opt out, and she predicted this exact result. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Young.
Mike Young, Charter Street, Newburyport. I'm a physician retired after more than 40 years. I used to treat children with cancers and immune system diseases. I want to read a little note here from the Surgeon General of the United States. Surgeon General warns of marijuana risk in pregnancy and youth. August 29, 2019, he wanted to counter what he calls "false perception of the safety of marijuana," emphasizing the risk to a fetus developing brain and the growing brains of children and teens. Quote, "No amount of marijuana use during pregnancy or adolescence is known to be safe," said U.S. Surgeon General Jerome Adams, M.D., in a formal advisory today. Unless and until more is known about the long-term impact, the safest choice for pregnant women and adolescents is to not use marijuana." Period. Surgeon General of the United States. So I'd ask you guys to honor the vote as it was, November 5th. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Eileen Burnham.
Good evening. Eileen Burnham, 13 R. Bromfield Street. I will be brief. I am just here to endorse the thoughts that have been mentioned by Mike and Marilyn and Lynn and Josh and those who are asking that the council respects the will of the voters. I really do appreciate the time and listening and participation of all on the council. I would like us all to remember that democracy is a privilege, that we are participating right now is a privilege that many have fought and died for. I would like us all to remember as citizens of this great city that this is one issue that we disagree on, that we are neighbors, that we are fellow board members, that we are on soccer fields and committees together, and that this is one issue. And my guess is that if we took a poll of most other issues going on in our city right now, that we would agree on most of them. So I'm here again to endorse what the previous folks have said and ask the councilors to respect the will of the voters.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of those who testified for staying within their time limits, with a few exceptions as well. Public comment having been completed, we'll move on to the mayor's comments. Mayor Holliday?
Thank you, President Connell, and it was also the council. A few brief updates. As you know, we've been, I talked a couple weeks ago about the fact that we've been working with the Newburyport Hub, on working with them about acquiring a couple different additional staff so that we can start filming ZBA and planning board meetings. They are in the process of interviewing. We will then work out a contract arrangement with them in terms of providing funds for the 60 hours of staffing per month through the rest of this fiscal year. And the other request is that in order to upgrade the quality of their editing of these videos and posting on YouTube, they are requesting a new piece of equipment to be able to increase their ability to do those edits. The Clipper Sea Rail Trail, the cleanup of the PCBs behind the wastewater treatment plant began last week. They were a little delayed because of the weather. However, the contractor still believes that he should be able to, or they should be able to finish the work by the end of December. We will keep you posted on that timeline if there are any changes. In terms of High Street and highway safety and the striping issue, we, as you know, had ATC come out, an independent contractor engineering firm, did the borings, determined that there was damage to the road as a result of their removal of the lines. And our legal KP law has been working with Highway Safety's insurance company, and they are waiting for additional reports from Highway Safety, but they know that we want them to stay on top of this, you know, where we are with the insurance company, and will have a deeper discussion about additional options should we not be able to be successful in resolving this through their insurance company. I'm happy to report that finally, the sub-legal firm that was working on obtaining all of the NRA deeds for every piece of property is complete, and we should have a full report by the beginning of next week, which of course I will share with you. Wanted to offer my congratulations to the Newburyport Clippers. Started out a little bit rocky on Thanksgiving, but they pulled it through with the 34-20 win on Thanksgiving Day. I also want to recognize the Lions Club for their exceptional dinner, Thanksgiving dinner that they provide for the community and members, seniors, anyone can come and participate in dinner, but also to the volunteers who delivered hundreds... But also to the volunteers who delivered hundreds of Thanksgiving Day meals to residents in the greater Newburyport area. Our holiday tree lighting went off well, and Santa arrived by the Coast Guard. We lit a tree, and thank you to the Keiths from, he is foreman in DPS, but his family is from Amesbury and donated the tree for us. So thanks to the Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, to DPS for all their efforts to beautify our city for the holiday season, and I hope you're all enjoying the enhanced Christmas decorations this year, or holiday decorations. This past week, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito hosted the mayor's for a reception in the library at the State House, was an opportunity to meet some of the new mayors who were elected in this last election. We also had this last week, on Friday, our semi-annual legislative meeting with our reps and senators, with all the mayors and town managers. We really focused conversation on transportation, which is a huge issue. Senator McGee from Lynn, former Senator McGee from Lynn, who chaired transportation in the Senate, is also working on a broad-based ad hoc group as mayor of Lynn on transportation issues. So I will keep you posted on that if there's any information you'd like to provide to us that we can provide to this group. We also talked a lot about housing and CSOs, of course. Snow, I would also like to thank DPS, I thought, for our first prolonged and difficult storm of the season, that they did an excellent job managing this storm. We will have further discussion on snow management Thursday night, 7:00, upstairs. That meeting's been planned for a while, where we will present our snow emergency plan, which is in draft form now, take feedback, finalize it, and also take comments and questions, concerns from the public. The Snow Angels program is really taking off. This is coordinated by Youth Services in the Council on Aging, where they pair someone from a neighborhood with an elder who needs, or someone who is disabled who needs assistance with shoveling. It's been incredibly successful, but we have still more people who need Snow Angels. So please, reach out to us if you know of someone who needs a Snow Angel, or if you also know of somebody who might be interested in helping out. Share the Warmth was again run this year. There were 17 family hot cocoa stands on Saturday throughout the city, and it was a nice event with donations accepted for Youth Services. I couldn't pass up the opportunity to provide you with the pictures that we recently received regarding the Kupla. This is our community preservation funds at its best. I ask people to stop, take a minute, and just look up at this magnificent job they did on the Kupla. And it was multiple years, and I thank the council for their support of the funding for this magnificent building, which is the showcase of High Street. Also, I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to all the councillors as you come into the close of another term. We've had another very productive year. I appreciate all of the work, the many long hours of meetings, deliberations, and our work together on a lot of difficult issues over this past year, including marijuana. And I had no doubt that you would not honor the voters of this community in terms of their asking, they voted, this is what the vote is. So I had no doubt that you wouldn't move forward and adjust the zoning according to those wishes. We said goodbye to Greg Earls, who moved out of the city in August after years of work. We also said goodbye to Tom O'Brien last time, and tonight, we have the opportunity to say goodbye and thank you to Larry Junta. Larry Junta has been a city councillor since 2014 in Ward Five. He has unfortunately had, came in a little bit later than councillor Vogel, who unfortunately had the pleasure of managing the landfill when it was first being developed. We got the end results of that, and we are now at closure after all these years. So that certificate will be coming from DEP shortly, but I have closeout questions before we get there. But anyway, you did a great job keeping your neighbors informed and working closely with the city on some really difficult issues on the landfill. You were a great advocate for your ward. Unfortunately, never mind, we won't go there. But, no, you really were, and I, one of the things that I know was a very hard vote for you over the years was on the intermodal facility, and I really appreciate you, you know, doing your due diligence on that and taking the hard vote in favor of the intermodal facility. And we will figure out how to deal with snow emergencies and parking problems, and I apologize to the people who paid so much money to park there. But, so, you can't go away without a citation, so City of Newburyport's certificate of accommodation is hereby awarded to Larry Junta Jr., 2014 to 2020, City councillor for Ward Five. Thank you for your outstanding service, given under my hand and seal this ninth day of December in the year 2019, signed by myself and the city council president. Larry, thank you so much.
Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you. I, you know, usually at our last meeting, we, you know, I'll talk more, but I just want to thank everybody, and I want to thank the mayor for this in particular. It does mean a lot. I worked hard for the ward and laid on the grenade when I needed to, so, as they say. That's right. So I appreciate, this means a lot. I'm going to frame this and put this in my office, so, thank you.
That's a nice way to start. Why don't we get to the consent agenda, please?
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for November 25th. There is no transfers, there are no communications, and there are no appointments. The following matters will be removed from the respective committees with the motion to approve the consent agenda. Budget and Finance, Communication 112, Communication 120, Order 132, Order 136, Communication 189, Order 158, Transfer 65. License and Permits, Communication 208. Neighborhood and City Services, Communication 194, 196, 197, and Order 162. Public Safety, Order 94, Order 145, 146. The following will not be removed. They've been taken out of the consent agenda by councillor Devlin. Communication 198, Communication 202, and 205. The following matters go back to those being taken out. Order 151, Communication 209, Communication 210. And Public Utilities Committee, Communication 206. With those three changes, that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion?
Just a quick question. Could you repeat those that aren't coming out?
This is all from Public Safety. Communication 198, Communication 202, and 205.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion again? A motion to approve as amended?
Second.
And seconded. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Thank you, councillors. And just a housekeeping note. It's my intention to bring out the four items related to cannabis retail sales at the start of committee reports. There are a lot of people who came here to express their opinions. They ought to get home at a reasonable hour without having to slog through all the other things that we're going to go through tonight. So just make a note on your agendas, please. I'm going to bring those out at the head of committee items. What do we have in the way of orders?
Well, we have two orders, Mr. President. We have Order 163, emergency preamble with respect to the Moral Charitable Foundation gift acceptance of $110,000.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second. A discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that unanimous?
That leads us to Order 163. Mr. President, if I may, the city council with gratitude accepts a gift from Mayor Gaden Moral Charitable Foundation, the amount of $110,000 to be expended in accordance with the funding directive dated October 25, 2019, submitted councillor Tantar.
This is the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Khan. Discussion? Councillor Tantar?
Just some background on this. You know, every year, the Moral Foundation has given a gift to the city for the parks. On September 20th, members of the Board of the Moral Foundation met with Lisa Reed, the parks director, the mayor, and also the chair of the Parks Commission. So the Parks Commission recommends some projects. Sometimes the Moral Foundation comes in with its own projects. This year, the Tree Commission made a request for trees. So the Moral Foundation does not have to grant what the city asks for. It's a gift. So they decided a set of funding that they wanted to undertake, some funding. One was for the Bartlett Mall to finish the historic restoration of the slope and to complete, actually, the historic entryway from Auburn Street. Secondly, to complete the drop of flat walkway, there will be sufficient funding to finish the whole job. Thirdly, the Patrick Tracy Square Improvement Project. There was a request that's, you know, down off Pleasant Street. There's a request for an extra bench, I believe, and for a table to play chess, and they approved that. Friends of Newburyport Trees, they approved. And then finally, there was a request to remove some of the limbs that prevent people from High Street from seeing the tower in Atkinson Common. They did not approve that because they weren't sure they wanted to go there in terms of cutting down those limbs at this point. However, they did approve some funding for clearing limbs away from the gazebo that's in Atkinson Common. So this is not going to committee. We've done this in the past. We're thankful, I'm thankful for the gift for the city, and I recommend that you vote yes. By the way, we could put this off till next session. It's just that if we get the $110,000 earlier rather than later, we get the $110,000 earlier. It's in our bank account.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's not much out there. Ordinances? Well, I believe we've acted on both of them, have we not?
We did the preamble first, and then we just did the other.
You did them together?
No, we did two separate ones.
We did them separately.
It's done.
I'm sorry, I meant to make, I missed it. I meant to make a motion to waive our rule to not have to send it to committee.
Mr. President, let's go back to the emergency preamble, which was simply approved, and I think what councillor Argamond is saying, it should be approved and waived the rules.
That's a ruling of parliamentarian. Okay, so we're backing up to Order 163.
Is that okay with the first?
I'm fine with it.
Do you want the second withdrawn? I can do that, or you want it?
Motion and seconded, both withdrawn?
Make a new motion. Councillor Argamond?
Motion to waive our rules to allow consideration without committee referral.
Second. Moved in second. A discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we've waived the rules, and I think it would be appropriate to have a confirmatory vote on the Order 163, if we could get such a motion. So moved?
If I may, Mr. President, maybe on the emergency preamble itself, since that was the...
I'm sorry, you're correct. Is there a motion on the emergency preamble itself?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Seconded. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now to the confirmatory vote that I'd suggested on Order 163. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Seconded. A discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for the correction, councillor Argamond. Ordinances?
We have a second reading of ordinance 42, which essentially strikes certain language and leaves in section 2, 3, D, no person shall park any vehicle or trailer in the playground area of the Bartlett Mall located at the corner of Auburn and High Street, submitted councillor Shan.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Moving in second. A discussion. Discussion. Hearing none? We'll take a roll call.
This is on the second reading for ordinance 42. Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tantar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Argamond?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor McConnell?
Yes.
Ten years, one absent. Ordinance passes on second reading.
All right, so consistent with what I stated previously, we're going into committee items now. We're going to take them up in this order. We're going to have license and permits, Order Number 12, and this is based on a consultation that the clerk and I had about what makes sense. And it seemed to us the...
43.
I'll get to that. Thank you. That we'll take up the license and permits ordinance first, budget and finance order second, then the two ordinances in planning and development, third. So license and permits. Is there something you'd like to report out?
Oh, we'll motion to remove ordinance 43.
Second.
Ordinance 43. Moved and seconded to remove this from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion subsequent to that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Councillor Vogel?
All right. Thought that this was going to come a little bit later, but it's coming earlier than not. So, so that you know, I really am a nice guy. And mostly, my concerns here, I'm opposed to this being voted on, and I will be opposed to the other three behind this for no other reason than I do believe in democracy. And none of what I have to say is any type of false accusations, and we'll get to the point that two wrongs don't make a right. So there's two reasons for my opposition to what is on the floor right now and what will come out later. The first one is that the election is clouded. It's clouded by the fact that the opt-out campaign committee violated campaign law. That's not a false accusation. That's not an exaggeration. That just is. Secondly, we are not obligated by law. There is no law that says we must rush to get this done, and if I may add, if we get it done. Those are the two reasons that I object. On the issue of being clouded, the opt-out committee has been challenged, meaning that their actions have been investigated by the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. It's no small thing. And that investigation has not been completed. Those are true facts. The challenges revolve around three items. The first is the initial failure to form a political committee, even though the committee was formed back in September. They didn't let anybody know that there was a committee until essentially the day before the election. That's one thing. Secondly, the timing and the reporting of their finances. The finances were due, the reports were due on the 28th of October, which is eight days before the election, and the opt-out submitted them on November 12, seven days after the election. And as it is, there were 14 candidates in the last election. Half of them submitted their finances late. I was four days late. I've been on time in the past. I've been late in the past. When I have been late, I have let the political, the office know that I have been late. I self-report. What's the difference between my being four days late and the opt-out being 12 days after the election? Why is that important? Why do we care? It's important because the submissions before the election allow the public to take a look at who is sponsoring us, who approves of us, who's giving us money. And you can make a judgment on that character of that person as to whether or not you want to support them by voting for them when you're in the ballot box. You get to take a look at who, you know, who supports them. That wasn't provided the opportunity to the people... That wasn't provided the opportunity to the people that were voting on the marijuana issue. It wasn't happening. And it is very possible, even though it was suggested in public comment that it may not be, it is very possible, that given the opportunity to look at the finances of a political committee, that you may not be, you may find that objectionable, and you may change your vote, or you may vote accordingly. That's possible. We won't know. We won't know until the investigation also has happened as to what took place. In short, what was supposed to be transparent in terms of democracy, in terms of elections, and we're kind of hearing that way out there in terms of our national picture, what was supposed to be transparent was opaque. And this is what I object to. It's got nothing to do with pot. It's got nothing to do with whether or not we have retail or not, it has to do with the election. Finally, the nature of the finances. One big thing that the Office of Political Finance is concerned about is that the mailer that went out, it was indicated that it was paid for by a certain person, when in reality it was not. It was reported elsewhere in the finances that it was reported by somebody else. And again, given that opportunity to know that as a voter, you may have changed your mind. These are true facts, these are not, these are not false, these are true. Investigation is going on.
Sorry, you're out of order. This is time for counsel deliberation. Counselor, I was not gaveling you out of order.
I understand that you're not gaveling me, but I just was called a liar. Liar, the word liar came out of her mouth.
Counselor, I don't think we benefit from a back and forth. If you want to speak to someone, speak to the chair.
If the chair would perhaps excuse the young lady from leaving the room?
I'll deal with that if that's necessary. It's not necessary at this time. Please continue.
These are not lies. These are, there's a lot of time spent in the last two weeks pulling this stuff together. This is not something I took lightly, and this is not about pot. So, in short, the committee did not act legally, and has yet to be determined if there's anything of intentional deception. That's true, I agree. It hasn't been determined. The Office of Political Finance does not decertify elections. I get that. What they look at is whether the action is done out of ignorance, whether they're done out of hubris, whether the action's inappropriate. I think that there's some combination in there, but that's a comment on the side. So, we don't know. We just don't know, and it is incumbent upon us not to act. Then to the arguments that this must be done right now within this session. Importantly, we are not required to act. Yes, the law says that for the law to be changed, we must do it. The law does not require us to do anything, quite frankly. The question was non-binding, it was essentially an opinion survey. Again, it's important to acknowledge that the law does not require us to do anything. We're satisfying 2,783 voters. To the argument that we're vulnerable until we change the law, there's zero chance of anybody coming into this community and getting a license at this point. And to the argument that we must do this by the end of the year because this group of counselors knows best, I can't connect the logic dots. So, a colleague came to me and said, you know, so let's say the Office of Political Finance finds violations, then what do we do? Then what do we do? Then what? So, we don't do anything, we wait, the results come out, and what do we do when we learn? My response is very simple, it just depends, right? It depends. So, say the actions are outrageous, and there's enough of the matter to go to the Attorney General's office, and there's very big questions as to who was involved, something more than we don't know. We make a decision then. If it's to the lesser degree, that's another thing. Whatever it is, we wait, and we take action accordingly. We are participants in representative government. This isn't town meeting. And that means we're here to make the decisions for the good of the community as a whole, and our oath says to uphold the law of the land. Why do I care so much about this, finally? I mean, really, why do I care? You're probably snickering, thinking it's about pot, but it's not. Really, the key issue is not whether or not there'll be pot shops in Newburyport, or even if we do this now or go to the next session. That's not the key issue. The primary issue is whether or not this council thinks the observation of campaign finance law is essential to democratic rule. There's that word democratic. Do we care? Is it important? Do we believe in the law of the land? We stand up there on the podium, and we take an oath that says we'll uphold and respect the law of the land. So, I'm not going to vote on this going forward. I'm sorry, I'm going to say no until the cloud's removed. And again, it's got nothing to do with pot. I've made no false accusations. I'm glad the children are watching. The children are watching, this is democracy right here. This is the law. And thank you for your time, I can sleep at night.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. I was the second member of licensing and permit, and I voted to bring it forward. So, it was a split recommendation coming out. And I voted for it because as I saw it, the voters of Newburyport had two choices. They made two decisions. One was a few years ago when they legalized marijuana, and they said it's right to decriminalize it. And the second one was to say, in this election, on November 5th, we're not ready for retail shops here. It's an immature business, and we need to take a pause on that. And their voice was spoken very quickly and very completely. And so, I think it's our duty to implement these changes quickly, as they have spoken. And I think that this council would do a service to the new council coming in to not kick this can down the road and to actually act on it tonight. So, I am going to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Junta?
As the sponsor, I feel the responsibility to let everybody here and at home know more about exactly what we're voting on here. So, the paragraph that is in this general ordinance is exactly, there were two paragraphs on the ballot. This is one of the two paragraphs. So, when you went into the ballot, you read the ballot, and it said vote yes or vote no, this is exactly the language. I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm supposed to be referring to you. My apologies. This is exactly the language that the voters voted on. There's been question, who wrote the ballot question? This was written by our city's attorney. This was written by the city solicitor. The language that you see here, our city solicitor also is a city solicitor for about 100 other towns in Massachusetts. This is canned language they've been using with every single town that they've worked with that has had an opt-out vote, which is over 100 towns. So, this is not language that was foreign to them, they just recycled it for our ballot. So, what we're voting on right now is exactly what the voters voted on. Again, just to add some color.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Please, Counselor Devlin was first.
Yeah, just very briefly for me, I recused myself in the initial discussions, and I explained this at the ballot question. I also filed a written explanation with the clerk's office, talked to the Ethics Commission twice under their guidance. Not only did I not have a direct conflict, as I thought, you know, I didn't actually think I did, I didn't have the appearance of conflict either, so I actually didn't really even need to file anything with the clerk's office. I do want to stand up and explain that. I've had two conversations with the state Ethics Commissions, I've got three pages of notes on one, and two pages of notes on the first call, and both of them said I didn't have a conflict. But, I was conscientious as a lawyer to be careful about the client, but I also have attorney-client privilege as far as disclosing things about what my client's doing as well. But, so that's why I will be participating today. The other thing I'd like to say, as I said in the paper, when I was trying, someone was trying to get me to take sides on this before the election, I said it's not appropriate for us to take sides, we have to do what the people want. And if it was the other way around, I would be here saying, I'm standing up and I'm going to vote, you know, that the, I'm going to get this confused, the opt-in crowd had won, and that's what we'd be voting on right now, perhaps we wouldn't have to vote on anything. But, I do want to say something about Josh Baumfeld. For the last six years, I've had the privilege of coaching baseball with Josh. And although I don't think we're great friends, we're good friends. And Josh is one of these guys, you know, we've been doing it since we were seven years old, and believe it or not, adult males sit around and they talk about how a seven-year-old is going to be this great baseball player, and so they're jockeying for position for the best players on the team. Josh never did that. And now that I look back on it, I feel foolish that I did it. Josh never, ever did that. He did whatever team he got. He said, okay, and then he worked with those kids three or four times a week for the entirety of the spring, and at the end of the spring, his kids were much better baseball players, and a testament to Josh is now those kids are 12 and 13, and they're all playing Babe Ruth, where Josh also coached my son, I had the privilege of Josh coaching my son, and Liam walked away from last year saying, that was the best baseball experience I ever had. He wanted to quit baseball, but because Josh taught him the intellectual side of the game and the thought side of the game, and where his athletic, you know, talents came to bear on baseball, Liam now wants to play in high school, which I'm super happy. Josh also coached Liam in football a couple of years ago. My son Liam is not a super, you know, physical kid, football might not be his sport, but Josh never said that, and Josh always encouraged him and said good things to his father and his mother as well. So, you have to be careful, these are people, and Lynn has coached soccer, and Josh coaches his daughter in basketball. You just have to be careful. These are people who live in our community. Same thing with Connie Preston, one of the nicer people I've met, and I don't think any aspersion should be cast on her, as the treasurer, and finally, I'll admit, my $162.50 that I contributed to myself, I filed late as well. I didn't think I had to because I paid for it myself, and I didn't have any campaign committee, and I didn't have a bank account. So, I didn't take any donations. So, my $162.50 was also from my 300 door knockers, was also filed late. The other thing I would say about Josh, just want to mention one more thing, he has a backyard that has, it looks like a baseball playground, because Josh was really very good, if you talk to his father, awesome city, New York City baseball player, all New York City baseball player. And for six to seven teams a season, because we had a shortage of fields and we didn't have any place to practice, Josh and Lynn would offer up their backyard, just random teams, I mean, there were people in there, coaches in there, that didn't even know Josh, and I'd walk in and they'd be walking out. I had one, a couple of my kids who were in the third grade ran up and jumped around in a bouncy house that they were having a party for, all tolerated by the Baumfels, because they loved children, they loved, you know, being a part of the community and helping everybody get better.
Counselor, might I redirect you toward the...
Yeah. You're going to go through everyone in the room? All of this is...
Speaking of someone who's probably the worst baseball player in the history of Little League, I wish I'd had him as a coach, but can we get to this?
So, all of that, I just want to remind people that this is out there. So, and thank you.
Discussion of the prohibition of non-medical marijuana retailers, which is the matter before us.
Sirree, I haven't talked to you.
Thank you, yeah, it's good to have some levity tonight, for sure. You know, when I, after the election, we had these matters come into committee, and we had our, into the council, I should say, in our first committee meeting about two weeks ago, starting on this. And I came into the meeting thinking, you know, I want to take the tack of kind of calling for unity and hoping that we, I even said the word unanimous, and I saw some faces across the way sort of bristle at that idea. And so, that was my hope, but I don't think that's reality, unfortunately. And there are several things that I feel absolutely compelled to respond to, and I'll be doing that now, and you can take a deep breath, this will be my long speech, and I'll only stand up if I have to feel I have to in the future. So, first thing is, I always, when I come to these things and I start writing out my notes of what I want to say, I always go back and I get the whole history of the issue from start to finish. I did this with the Brown School, and it helps me remember all the meetings and all the time we spent together. I'm sure we all look back on it lovingly. So, you actually have to reach all the way back to January of 2018 to get this first iteration. A brand-new counselor decided to bring forward a discussion of medical marijuana in the business park. That was our first foray. Then in April, two ordinances came in, one for cultivation, one for retail. The same month, an order came in to establish the retail sales tax, that's going to be coming up later. Then in May, we were just kind of frazzled, so we passed a moratorium, and we said, gosh, how are we going to deal with this? We're getting kind of feedback from all different directions, we have this option of a moratorium, let's take it to give ourselves some breathing room. In June of 2018, cultivation was passed many months after it was first brought in, and at that time, a brand-new amendment was brought in on retail sales in an effort to find some consensus as opposed to the first two that were introduced back in April. Three long months of committee meetings, we come to the floor for a vote on that retail marijuana. Many of us remember that vote, I certainly do. I also remember getting gavelled down during good of the order, so it's one that I'll never forget. But in September of 2018, that proposal, which most folks refer to as the traffic circle proposal, would have allowed an unlimited number of shops to be had at the traffic circle. And that was killed. It was killed, so to be honest with you, unbelievably to me, at that night, probably note that I vented my frustration that evening. And really, it's an interesting thing, because in typical zoning fashion, you need eight people on the city council to agree to something in order for something to happen. Marijuana is very different. Instead, you actually needed eight to stop something from happening, which was to allow marijuana shops anywhere in the city. And that meant the four counselors were in the driver's seat. The very next day, that matter was reconsidered by two counselors who decided we wanted to bring it back to the floor, and after two more weeks, it came back again, and we had another vote on it. This time, it had been expanded to include Story Ave, an area that I think most folks knew, was not terribly thrilled about the prospect. But, you know what? We had no choice. We had two options, we could either pass that zoning and allow it at those two locations in that fashion, or we could have it everywhere in the city. Well, I think we remember how that went. In early November 2018, the city council was presented with about 1,500-plus signatures asking for a ballot vote. You would think that would sort of be non-controversial, but I hope you're starting to get the point here, we've been grinding on this since the beginning. So, getting it on the ballot was already controversial, the signatures weren't compelling for everyone in the way that they were for me anyways, and frankly, getting on the ballot barely passed with a vote of six to four and one present in December. And then finally, the city solicitor wrote the ballot question, and nearly an entire year elapsed from that time. Just in case you thought you were in aging, we passed that back in December of 2018, we waited a full year so that we could honor the desire to have it during a regular election. Every step of the way, we have been grinding on this, and I wanted to put all of that out there so that it could be clear that this wasn't a new issue, we're not breaking new ground here, and it is in fact time for us to move forward. So, that's the first part, it's history. So, now, why now? Counselor Large has asked that same question, I think it's a good question to ask. To me, first step is actually the timeline above shows it's time to move forward. How much more grinding can we do? We've done every possible thing we can do, we've looked at it from every angle, we've had 417 proposals from different angles with different ideas. We've tried, the council has made two attempts to pass, the second one passing, clearly upsetting enough people to demand a ballot vote. There are no more rocks to overturn, we have looked at all of them, it's time to move forward in that respect. Second of all, you know, I do think that the council members that are sitting in this room right now, the 10 of us that are present and the one that's absent, do know this issue better than anybody else inside and out, because we have taken the testimony, we have sat in the committee meetings, and you can't recreate that. You were here, you understand it. Third, a vote has been held. What else can we do? We've gone out to the voters and we've asked them, what do you want to do? I do bristle at the idea that this is a non-binding vote. I understand how the state statute is written, the idea that it doesn't compel us to act is just yet another flaw in 94G, which should be taken to a shredder, that should be put into a shredder, and then the entire shredder should be put in another shredder so that they can start from scratch. Okay? And then the next couple is that I'd like to remind everybody that the power to ban marijuana shops is actually a power that's granted only to the voters. The city council could never have had that debate, we never had that option, we talked about that at length, and we put it on the ballot. This wasn't something we could have said, well, we can zone it here, 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 or we can ban it. That one is off the table for us in this room, and only as a result of this vote can we consider. And frankly, I do think that the longer this goes on, the more divisive it is, and I don't think that's good for the council, and I don't think it's good for the city. So if it's not about pot, then it's time to move this thing forward. Okay, next couple topics. Next thing is, talk about campaign finance, absolutely head-on. Most folks don't know, maybe most folks don't know, candidates and committees report finance data to the city clerk. Local elections like this, municipal, non-mayoral, don't go to the state, they just get reported to the city clerk who takes them and posts them on our wonderful website, which could use a lot of work, but they are made available. And I want to be clear that, you know, there's no argument here that following campaign finance rules isn't important, or that they don't exist for a specific purpose. They do exist to foster transparency. What I can't abide by is an unequal and uneven treatment of different individuals in different committees. And so, as has been stated by a few people here, the report we're talking about is called a 102. This fall, 15 102 reports were filed between candidates and committees, 60% of them or nine were filed late, okay? And now, some counselors will tell you, yes, but there's a difference. Some were filed late before the election, and some were filed late after the election. But what they're really saying is, you know what? Some rules are more important than others, and I'm okay being judge, jury, and executioner for certain groups, but not for others, and that cannot stand. And further, filing a report late is one thing, yes, that's a date-based item. You can say, look, it's past the date, that's what I did when I told you about 60%. But there's another part when you sort of put into that intent and you use words like nefarious, sinister, evil. I don't think any counselor would accept, if I were to stand up here and say that because their filing was done late, I question their seat next year on the city council, when I take my oath on January 6th, that I will not listen to those counselors who filed late, because forever there will be a cloud over them, hangover them, whether they truly have the power, truly have the seat that they said they did. And while we're talking about reports, as was stated, both groups filed late, I think that there are missing items on the opt-in report, for example. But that's a question not for us, but rather a question for OCPF. Two weeks ago, as we go down our list, a question was brought up about in-kind donations and whether that was right. It's amazing to see the arguments change every couple of days, but here I am, I have the OCPF filing or manual on what an in-kind donation is, and an in-kind donation is defined very clearly. And it says, "All contributions of anything of value other than money, worth in excess of $50 in a calendar year." Neither group had a bank account, neither group could take money, therefore everything is in-kind. But it's a sideshow. At the end of the day, you get to see the report, you see what money came in and from whom, and you get to see where the money went out. So I don't understand that one. And so we'll hope to leave it to OCPF, and they can figure out what they want to do. So let's talk about democracy next, and I promise that I'm going to be wrapping up shortly. So yes, campaign finance is an important part of democracy. The reports are out there, and anybody can see them. And if you look at the reports, you'll see that 100% of the money for both groups was contributed by Newburyporters. 100%! In all reports, there were three reports. There was a 102 from opt-in, there was a 102 from opt-out, and there is another form filed by the pediatrician's office that funded the billboards. All Newburyport money. So if you're going to, you know, step into the role of jury, and you want to be the trial, put a trial on these folks to say, okay, is there a cloud? Can I remove the cloud? Then at least be fair and be reasonable. And I do wonder about the motivation of questioning this election, because there's another side to democracy, which is that being a little bit rough like this does have a chilling effect on the willingness of people to stand up and say something for fear that they're going to be busted down on any number of technicalities or issues. And we can argue about whether this is a technicality or not, but I've been through four elections, and I've never once heard an OCPF report be discussed on the floor. And I have been through all the OCPF reports for the past four years, and there's lateness all over the place. So this one is a new one for me in a town of 17,000 people. We have a responsibility to protect democracy, that's true, but if you're just going to talk about it like it's black and white, you've missed the point. So there are no grounds for any counselor to oppose any of these votes tonight, no matter what your personal beliefs are. There is not sufficient information or evidence that there's anything going on in OCPF. You have the reports, you can read them. 5,417 people voted in this election, and if you don't honor the vote, you actually are insulting both of them, both groups, those that voted yes and those that voted no. And I think a vote in opposition would be a sign of disrespect, disenfranchisement, and it would be really a frustrating way to end the year. So I'll be voting yes on this and all the other matters that come behind it, and see you on the next term. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Council President. So I, there's a couple of things I want to respond to. So as everyone knows, this has been a very painful journey, painful two years. Basically, marks are, especially as a new counselor, this marks my term, this really does, this issue. Let me just kind of broadly, first of all, before I state where I lie on the issue. This, to me, is an example of how we treat each other. Yes, we are all Newburyporters, but it's hard to sit here and watch sometimes the disrespect that shouldn't be happening. I know we are all coming from different places, we have different opinions, but it shouldn't be a sporting match. This is not a soccer match, this is not a game. So I just, having listened to so many other communities discuss this issue, I really applaud the way that the council president and how they started by saying, please, hold any kind of, any kind of outburst, hold anything you're going to say, because we should be in this room and respecting each other and feel comfortable to say things that are not easy to say. You know, I'm a shy person, I'm not someone that likes to just come and lay out maybe an opinion that's not popular, and it's even harder when you know people are snickering or talking behind you. So I just want to say that. You know, I know we are all here, we all have passion, and we care about what we're doing here. So I just respect both sides, how people feel, but I really, really emphasize that we need to respect each other. Doing this job is not easy. So with that said, I do want to go on to a couple of points. I really appreciate the walkthrough history that was done by Counselor from Ward 1. There's a key part, though, that he missed in that history, and that was also back in April-June, when you talked about the introduction of the moratorium, we also introduced a ballot question. And I don't think that's something we should forget. That was a critical part of that history. In 2008, we did introduce a ballot question. And I am someone that likes to go back, look at the actions we did, and learn from them. In hindsight, I think that should have been discussed before zoning, but it's all, again, in hindsight. If we did move forward with the ballot question, it would have been yes to ban and no not to ban. It would have been a very different question. The reason the question was the way it was is because we zoned, and now we had to undo that. So that's a really important part of our history, that if we don't remember that, it will affect maybe if we ever do see another situation like this. So that's one really important part of that timeline. The second thing I really want to point out, because I did tons of research on this since I came into office, January 2018. The power to ban issue, that's an important one to actually understand. The power to ban only goes to the people if you were a yes city in '16. The power to ban for a no city is from their council. So that's another important piece of information that is critical to understand. So now going back to the campaign finance, and I hope I'm not digressing from the issue, I will get to my position. The campaign finance report, okay, yes, I understand that that's not going to, for me personally, that's not going to affect how I'm going to move forward. So I'm going to move forward in honoring the vote, for sure, on everything that we're doing. I have a couple of amendments. But by no means should we at all dismiss the fact that the campaign financing is not produced before elections. I think that's a big miss. And I think if we don't sit here and acknowledge that, then we're not really, we're not doing our job in terms of pointing out something that's a ballot question committee. So I think moving forward too, if that's going to be, and I have some suggestions, I think our site could be, our website could be a little bit more informative on that. We will probably have another ballot question in the future, and as ballot questions are kind of tend to do, is you have two sides. I think we should all be educated on how you do that, and how you make it very transparent on where your source of funding is coming from. So yeah, so those are the points I want to make. I will be, though, supporting the will of the voters on November 5th, but I wanted to make sure I said those three things, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Counselor Augerman.
Yeah, I don't want to recap all two years, but just a couple of things that I think I have to put on videotape, and especially since I learned that the people that amassed the videotape edit them. I was a bit chilling. First, I disagree that we went about this the wrong way in 2018. I think we did it exactly the right way, which is, the presumption was that retail marijuana would be permitted, so we had to adopt some kind of regulations, if it was going to be permitted, of where to put it. And, you know, I realize this has been an unpleasant experience for many, but the only way to do it is the way we did it. Have that regulation in place, and then if the voters wish to ban a certain form of marijuana business, they can do that. Not just retail, by the way, any marijuana business, they can pick, anyone they want. I think we did that right. I also think it was worthy of our time to remind us that we did not set a special election. We listened to the testimony carefully, and we said, all right, we're going to have a full year for the parties to argue yea, nay, whatever. And then the council just withdrew, as it should have. I don't remember, other than that newspaper article that Counselor from Ward 1 referenced, any counselor really running on this issue, or, I could be wrong, but I just don't remember that. We stayed out of it. Then finally, the allegations of impropriety, investigation by Office of Campaign Finance, and so on, that is just not our issue. I mean, and it can't be. Doesn't matter whether it's marijuana or a mayoral election, and this came up in our joint committee hearing recently, and I raised the same point, I'm going to put it on videotape now. We've had elections where there have been anonymous websites put up attacking certain candidates, and those investigations were never resolved by the office in Boston. We just can't function if every time there's an election and there's alleged impropriety, and we say, there's a cloud. There's always a cloud. We can't do that. We have to move on. And, you know, you'll never be able to draw the line, well, this is really bad impropriety. It's just not our role. The election was validated, and we need to move on. There could be another election, there probably will be another election, but it is, it really, I don't think it's fair to cast the question as, do we believe that campaign finance laws are important? Of course they are, all the laws are important, but it's not our role to enforce it. And in fact, it would be very harmful if we were to interfere in campaign finance law. The final point I want to make is, as much as we know the people involved on opt-in and opt-out, and in my ward particularly, we have the most vociferous people on both sides. The question was decided by the people of Newburyport. It was not decided by any group. These are advocacy groups. So for example, the question was raised, well, what if the Office of Campaign Finance fines horrible improprieties, the Attorney General inspects? All that would ever speak to is what one advocacy group may or may not have done. The voters have spoken. We are not in the United States in the habit of going into the voting booth and asking after the fact, well, what is it that influenced you? We think that influence was wrong, and this one was right. It's done. It's a secret ballot. We don't know what motivated these voters. We don't want to know what motivated these voters. It's none of our business. And that's why we need to move this now and get on with other things.
Thank you, Counselor. Please, applause is appropriate at a basketball game or a movie theater, a stage play, but please, not here. It just slows things down. I beg your careful attention to what's being said. You'll have plenty of opportunity to bend our ears in the aisles at the Market Basket over the next two weeks if you want to, but please, not here. Counselor Tantar.
Counsel President, that goes for booing, too. I heard some last night at that game.
Yeah, certainly.
This is a really difficult decision for me. I stood here, and I said that I would honor the vote, you know, a year ago, that I would vote how the vote is of Newbury, and I, because I really am an advocate of democracy, and that's one abstract principle, all right, that I've actually studied a lot and I'm committed to. And even if the difference was one vote, after a couple recounts, very expensive, I still would have gone with, would go with the majority. However, I have to differ with some of my colleagues. The legislation states that the city council in cities that voted yes in 2016, the city council has to make an affirmative vote, has to do an affirmative vote. That's what's different about this, all right? We are not obliged, by the way, the way the legislation was written, if no had won, we couldn't over, we could not change that. We weren't allowed to. So the way, you know, I understand who wrote that, and I'll get to that in a minute, and I understand why they put that in, all right? But that's the law. That's how we were constrained. If no had won, we could not have banned marijuana retail sales in this city, but they didn't. So the legislation requires, right, that the vote is essentially a poll. We're asking the voters how you feel, but we are not obliged. We are not obliged. That suggests that counselors sitting around this table have to make a judgment. And there's a lot of information that goes into making that judgment, all right? And we've heard a lot of it. In committee, I asked that, I was looking for some sort of indication of contrition. You know, at the time, I thought, you know, okay, maybe a couple people had filed late, right? Now, it's actually seven counselors filed late. And so, you know, I'm going to, I don't want to, I'm not pointing my finger at opt-out or vote no, or the seven. We, as a community, have a problem with campaign finance law observation. I really, really take exception to the people who think it's not very significant, all right? It is significant. As a community, we have a problem. Now, I asked the city clerk to add some information, which was added to the city's webpage. I think we can undertake some changes, and I think this is a learning experience. I mentioned in committee, I was looking for a path forward, all right, to make sure that we are never in this circumstance ever again. Now, let me give you some hypotheticals, all right? Let's say the day after, let's say the election had gone the other way. Let's say 200 people, by 210 votes, the no votes had won. No filing, and the day after the election, all right, they file a report, and we find out that the national cannabis industry, John Boehner and Mitch McConnell, right, had come in with $5,000 in ads, right? Right? As noted, $6.5 million was spent statewide in the 2016 election by the cannabis industry, right, by a major corporation, right? At least they divulged it before the vote. So if that had happened, that, you know, and no had won, a lot of people might have said, whoa, wait a minute, all right? I might not have voted the way I voted if I had known that the literature that was distributed to my home was put out by the cannabis industry, by people who are interested in their own self-interest, in their own bottom line, and not necessarily the public interest, right? So turn it around and ask yourself, right, whether or not you would be squealing right now. And I got to tell you something, if that had happened, I would be squealing, all right? I would object to it. I would object to it, all right? Because it's, this is, again, this is not about marijuana, all right? This is about observing campaign finance law. In order for democracy to work, this is my second, right, closely-held belief and principle. In order for democracy to work, all right, the voters must know, all right, who is funding the campaigns, all right? It's my position. All right, now, how do I get to a vote on this? Because I'm really conflicted. And I, you know, I very much respect the at-large counsel, and he took a courageous stand, I believe, here, and he did not deserve to be criticized. I go a step further. I am being asked, and I said it earlier, I'm being asked to make a judgment, all right? And I do have more information now. And the opt-out folks, I looked at what they did report, and, you know, there were two businesses and a lot of individuals who gave money. One of the businesses, I think, I would have preferred, actually, if on the billboard it had been identified who paid for it. Actually, I think it would have helped the campaign if they had paid for it, right? Because there, the interest was clearly a public interest, all right? And the billboard was consonant with that position, all right, which was that essentially, if we have a retail marijuana shop, the thought was that would increase the likelihood that adolescents would get exposed, that would be more likely to use marijuana. That's a very legitimate position, I was, you know, that's in the public interest. I don't have to agree with it, all right, but it is in the public interest. The other one, you know, is a little iffy, all right? Mostly because of... Mostly because of the quote in the newspaper that was given, that the mailer was funded because it would be bad for businesses in Newburyport. And that's not really a public interest. That pretty much is a private interest. It's bad for business, so I don't think we should do it. And, but, you know, maybe that was just, you know, not a complete quote, and so now I'm conjecturing a little bit. If it was bad for business because it would give a signal that the community didn't take the health of its children, all right, then I can get there a little bit, all right? So, looking at, you know, since, you know, the pot shop in Salisbury didn't pay for those ads, all right, which they might have done to decrease business, all right? That's always a possibility. That is why we have campaign finance laws, all right? That's not there. So, I'm going to vote, and it's close, guys, it's really close. I'm going to vote to change the zoning. And I'm going to vote to change the zoning because I think it's extremely unlikely that the motivations in not reporting were anything but really innocent. However, I got to tell you, I really would like you guys to take this to heart and pay attention to campaign finance. It may be, my position may be affected by the fact that I've been a longtime treasurer of a political committee, and once you, once you look into campaign finance law and you understand why that is, takes place, you become committed, all right? Committed to the kind of transparency that that law requires. And so, this is a close one for me, but at the end of the day, I did commit to go by what the voters said, and the voters did say that. So, I'm going to vote yes, I think, or is it no? No, I think, I think it's yes.
I think we've gone almost around the horn. Counselor Shand.
I hope I'm the last one. So, we had a good planning and development meeting where the comment was made that the council is not the judicial branch, we are the legislative branch. We're here to write the laws, and as much, regardless of when the papers were filed, I do believe we should just let the Office of Campaign Finance do their job. So, I will be voting yes in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion. Counselor Jenta.
I'll just throw out something really positive here, is one of the things, you know, I guess the negative side, especially as the Ward 5 City Council, the last two years have been really difficult for me with this one issue. But the positive thing that really came out of this ballot question is, we got all of these people throughout the city, regardless of whether they were in opt-in or opt-out, we had all these new people engage politics, names that I had never seen before or heard before, and they got involved with their community, they had got involved in an election. And did they make mistakes along the way? Yes, they did. But these are just, they're just regular residents like us. They're just regular folks, and they got involved with their town, and they got involved with one side of a ballot question or another. And as politicians, and I am only one for another couple weeks, but as politicians, we should be excited that all of these new people engaged in election. And we should be excited that this, this, this collection of residents here, and I say that lovingly, I'm not sure how to put that, but, to all of these folks, they were able to drive 37% on a norm, non-mayoral election, nor presidential election. They were able to inspire people to vote like we're not able to do. And this is what we do for a living. There are a lot of positives that are happening here. We've got a whole bunch of people that are now engaged in the political process, and I love that. And they're able to get such a turnout, which is fantastic. And we should really be looking at the positives. We shouldn't be degrading both sides because we want these people to stay engaged. We don't want them to melt away. We want them to be engaged in the process moving forward. And I just think what we saw in the last election should make us feel good. It really should make us feel good that all of these new people got involved. Politics is tough, and everybody in this room knows it. And to have all these people put themselves out there and get involved, that's a great thing. And we really should applaud that.
Thank you, Counsel.
I think we could applaud.
Is there any other comment from the members?
We can do it without him.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote, and we'll ask for a roll call vote on this matter.
Point of order.
Yes.
We're just questioning one of the sponsors, Mr. President. One of the sponsors is not in the room due to health issues, and we are debating what we might do to make that, ameliorate that situation.
Very well. I'll ask for a ruling from the clerk.
It's Rule 12D. I mean, it's remedied one of two ways. You can waive the rules and proceed with two sponsors, not three. Or you can send me an email now that would put in writing that you wish to proceed without the sponsor, either way. Waiving the rules is probably simple and clean.
Waiving the rules, I think, is simple.
Unless anyone has an objection.
Are you double-checking the rule?
Motion to waive Rule 12D.
Okay, motion to.
Quick point of order, a quick suggestion.
Counselor Vogel?
How about we do that for all the?
Rise, please.
Collectively.
Yeah, how about we do that collectively?
I'm sorry, I'm unclear what you're just saying.
How about we do that collectively? So that all the issues are under this one particular waiving of the rules?
I understand. Thank you. Discussion of the issue, which is a parliamentary issue, in order to proceed with a vote with one of the sponsors not present, we need a remedy. What's the rule of the council? I'm first, I'm going to ask the clerk to comment on this.
I think the remedy is straightforward. It's a motion to waive the rules. First needs a first and second, and a vote. And at Counselor Vogel's suggestions, a good suggestion, you could do all three, which would be.
Four.
All four, which would be ordinances 43, 44, and 45, and order. Order number 158.
So moved, or was that already moved? I mean, I'm just trying, helping all. Okay, second.
No, no, we need a motion. Do we have a motion, please?
Yeah, so he said so moved.
I'm sorry.
So, the motion, the motion is to remove Counselor Thomas F. O'Brien collectively from ordinances 43, 44, 45, in order 158.
No, I think motion to waive Rule 12D.
Sorry, we're motioning to.
Waive the rules.
To waive the rules.
Is there a second on the motion to waive the rules? Second. Counselor Z. I hesitate.
We got it.
To ask for discussion. I'll ask the clerk to again clarify what the motion is.
The point of order. The motion is to, the motion is to waive the rules, Rule 12D, on all of the ordinances just listed collectively, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And order.
That's a summary. I don't have to ask the clerk for it.
Yes. As Counselor Devlin did, it's a motion to waive the rules on those three ordinances in one order. First and seconded.
I was trying to clarify.
Want to do a roll call, Mr. President?
Not quite yet. I believe Counselor Jenta had a question, a clarifying question.
Just to be clear, just because in the past, we've removed names when they weren't present, in this case, we're waiving the rules to leave the name on the document.
But no. The name will.
I want to be clear on this.
Yeah. Well, actually, it's a very good point. You haven't removed the name. It would remain on the document, just not in violation of a rule.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Which in some ways, maybe is the way it should be.
Just a moment, sure. Counselor Jenta, is that, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Z.
No, actually, I, now that that is drawn up.
You may wish to remove the name because you will need to get signatures, and given the timing of the end of the year, and the reason that the counselor is absent, I don't know if you're going to.
I don't think we have the right, those are old rules.
I think that's a reasonable point.
You have to send him an email, then. Clerk Jones.
No, but he'd have to sign at the end.
To get his name off of there, you have two options. Waive Rule 12D and go proceed with his name on there, or you have to send Clerk Jones an email saying.
Present me a written document right now.
I can't. I'm not one of the sponsors.
I don't think he can. All right. I think the likelihood of responses is, is low, based on a recent communication.
And write it out. You need to give him a written. One of the sponsors has to give him a written communication to remove Tom O'Brien.
I agree that it would be preferable. I think that's not realistic.
For argument, I respect his opinion. You do not think that's proper.
I don't think it, under our rules, we can't communicate while we're in session electronically.
I think you may be right.
You'd have to waive another rule.
Not electronically, this is handwritten.
You said an email. If you can do handwritten.
None of the sponsors have.
It's fine. You can do that in writing, yeah.
You can do it in writing. Can't we just waive 12D?
Can I do it in writing?
Just please write me a note, and we'll all feel better.
We'll get a signature.
So, we can vote on the motion on the floor, though, right?
Right, he's got one.
Mr. Clerk, to summarize.
We can.
The motion that's before us.
Hold on. You actually don't need to waive the rules if you got it coming right, correct?
Okay.
So, you're going to have two signatures. One would be Counselor Jenta, and one would be Counselor Connel.
This is going to take a couple moments if we work out. We'll take a recess.
We might as well take a recess to get it right.
We'll be in a brief recess.
What do we do?
That we believe would be appropriate. I'm going to ask the clerk to read it, and then ask for a sponsor and a second of the language. I know this is not our ordinary process, but I believe it's appropriate at this time. We want to get it right. I'll ask the clerk to read the motion that we believe meets the requirements of this particular circumstance.
Because of the complexity in Rule 12D, that all sponsors would need to be present, one obviously is not, we're going to go with waiving the rules as was done many, many, many times. It shouldn't be that number. Each time that we come up, we're going to waive the rules with respect to all of them. We're going to waive the rules with respect to the city council rules, and as it applies to ordinance 43, that's before. So, we would need a moving party.
Counselor Jenta has moved, and is there a second?
And then.
Counselor Z is the second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would you like a roll call vote?
I would.
So, this is a motion to waive the rules. Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
The rules have been waived. We now.
The appropriate thing would, for us to have a motion.
To approve.
To adopt. Did we already move? It was. And refresh our memories, who moved and seconded that, please?
I have, after much debate. Counselor Z moving to approve, and Counselor Jenta seconded.
Thank you. Further discussion on the substance of the original motion. Seeing none, we'll take. Don't go there, Joe. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Roll call vote on motion approved, ordinance 43. Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Nine yes, one present, one absent. Ordinance passes.
Thank you, Counsel.
First read.
We now have order, I believe it's 158, from Budget and Finance, consistent with the suggestion that I made at the outset, that we're going to take these four items up first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Z. Discussion, Counselor Tontar.
The Budget Finance Committee vote was three to zero to recommend that we eliminate the tax. One reason was if there isn't going to be a retail marijuana shop in town, there's no reason to have the tax. Another reason, quite frankly, that I gave, if in the future, retail marijuana shop would be allowed to open in the city, and the purpose is to drive the black market out of existence, you'd want to have the lowest possible price point to do that. And so, I would be opposed, in any case, to put a 3% tax on retail marijuana. So, no matter how it goes, I can vote yes on this. I recommend you all vote yes, too.
Further discussion. Seeing no hand, we'll move to a roll call on this matter.
Will you be the second? So, this is a motion approved, order 158, rescission of marijuana sales tax. Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Nope, nope, point of order.
We, you only.
I am sorry.
Did we do it collectively?
Is he on that also?
He's on all of them.
Yeah, he's on all four.
And then, a motion to waive the rules is in order.
All right, let me just first clear, clear our decks. Can we withdraw the original motion? Should we withdraw the original motion or not?
We didn't last time.
I don't think you have to.
It's on the floor. This is a motion to waive the rules. It doesn't.
Motion to waive Rule 12D for order number 158.
Second.
There's a seconded. Rich says not to do them all together.
Would it make you feel better if we removed it from the floor?
It's all right.
I thought so.
I'm fine.
Good. That was Counselor Z seconded by.
Counselor Jenta. Discussion of the motion to waive the rules. Counselor Jenta.
Just, again, point of order. No. Sorry, it's tough getting this all straight. I just wanted to bring an example that in the last vote, we had an motion to approve, then we waived the rules. We seem to be doing the same function this time, just so we're all on the same page.
Sure enough.
Yep.
Thank you for that observation. Further discussion. On the matter of waiving the rules, not the substance, but the waiving of the rules, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Counselor McColley?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
The rules are waived. Now, we revert to the original motion.
Motion on the floor is a motion approved by Counselor.
Tontar.
Tontar, seconded by Z.
Okay.
And this is the item to repeal the tax on retail sales of marijuana.
Order 158.
Discussion on that matter. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Connel?
Yes.
Nine, one, one. Order requiring only one vote, that order passes.
Thank you. Now, we have two items that were in Budget and Finance. Those are ordinances 44 and. Those are ordinances 44 and 45.
Motion to remove Ordinance 45.
Second.
45.
Moved and seconded to remove from committee. Discussion. Counsel Argum?
This is the first of two. This is merely the verbatim language from the ballot measure, but it is also cosponsored by Tom O'Brien, so we've got to waive the rule.
Let's get it out of committee first. So.
There's a motion to remove on the floor.
Yeah, just remove.
Motion to remove. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
There's no doubt in the chair. The motion is out. Counsel Argum, is there a motion?
All right. Motion to waive the Rule 12D in order to allow the cosponsor Tom O'Brien to remain on the listed.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counsel Z. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar? Counsel Vogel?
Present.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Argum?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve on first reading. Discussion, Counsel Argum?
We did have a joint meeting on this with both the committee of the whole and then later with the planning board. Planning board unanimously recommended approval, as did our committee.
What was the vote in committee, Counselor?
Three, nothing.
Thank you. Further discussion. Further discussion. Hearing none, being a zoning change, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
It's a roll call on motion approved, Ordinance 45. Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar? Counsel Vogel?
Present.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Nine, one, one. Motion approved, first reading has passed.
Motion to remove Ordinance 44.
Second. Moved and seconded, remove Ordinance 44 from committee. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, a voice vote will suffice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
One present. The chair is not in doubt. Is there a motion?
Yes. Motion to suspend Rule 12D to allow Tom O'Brien to remain a cosponsor.
Second. Thank you, Counselor. And the second is Counsel Jenta. Discussion of the suspension of the rules. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on suspension of the rules.
Motion to waive the rules with respect to Ordinance 44. Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Argum?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Motion to approve is amended in committee.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counsel Jenta. Discussion, Counsel Argum?
Yes, I understand the council at large will have another amendment. Let me just get everyone up to speed where we ended up with the version in your packet. So this is the longer ordinance because it amends the marijuana-specific section of our zoning ordinance. And of course, marijuana isn't just retail. It encompasses, I think we said, 10 other classifications of business. So there were really two changes that were made in committee and they were discussed with the planning board jointly and they recommended them, too. To do them in order, on page one, in the table of uses, we found that actually our existing code had an error and that marijuana establishments without retail sales had a footnote saying that the planning board would decide whether to allow them in our industrial districts. But then the table said they weren't permitted, which is obviously contradictory and a scribbler's error. That's now changed to special permit, as it should have been. That's the way we enacted it and shown on the edited videotape. Then you go a couple pages in. Section Roman numeral 31-dog. Subsection Arabic numeral four. And the committee and the planning board unanimously adopted an amendment suggested by the planning director, Andy Port. It's a clarification that marijuana businesses that are not permitted anymore does not include medical. That's, we want to make that clear. That was also written on the ballot. So just wanted to belt and suspend it, be absolutely crystal clear. This action does not apply to medical. I think that's all that we change below. And then I think there may be an amendment.
One moment before the amendment, let me ask the members, is there any need for a graphic? The planning director is here to display the graphic, the table of uses. If that's a necessity. If it's not, we'll just move forward. I don't see anybody shaking their heads in favor of that. Thanks, Andy. You're off the hook. Further discussion or further amendment? Counsel Khan?
Great. Thank you, Council President. Yes, there are a couple of amendments I want to propose. And I'm not sure whether to do this as a friendly amendment in terms of my first one, but there is a revised packet. I think that was provided on everyone's desk area. And the first one I'll just go ahead and talk about is Section 31F. That's titled Required Buffer Zones and Restrictions on Use. So 31F, item number two. And in your copy, it should be a one zero, like a one with a circle around it. So the simple edit is, as you'll see throughout this document, we've, it was even pointed out when we had the joint meeting with the planning board, was the use of the word marijuana business versus marijuana establishment. One of the things that I was talking about and brought up in the planning board meeting, but then later was able to work with the planning director exactly on how to kind of create some more clarity around here in terms of what do we mean by a marijuana establishment and tying it back to the table of uses. So what I would like to propose as a friendly amendment at this time is if we could just strike no marijuana business and instead change it to neither use number 802 marijuana establishments without retail sales nor use number 803 medical marijuana treatment centers or registered marijuana dispensaries, and then continue the language, shall be located or permitted within 500 feet of any public entrance to the following uses. And then we have the 250 feet at the traffic circle. But the only change I want to take is to remove no marijuana business and then specify it to the table of uses to use number 802 and use number 803. So I thought first I could just ask that as a friendly amendment.
Yes.
And then I'll talk about the other, which it seems more substantial.
Again, is that a friendly amendment to the sponsor?
Absolutely.
It is. And it requires no action on the part of the council. Thank you. So we now have a.
Counsel Argum, do you accept that?
Well, I'm not a sponsor. I'm just a little nervous about it because we had a recommendation by the planning board below and so we're coming up against state law. I support the amendment, but I think the better course would be to vote on the amendment.
That's fine. Fair enough. I'm persuaded by that presentation. I think you're probably correct. So Counsel Jenta?
I'm accepting the amendment. Do you want me to make the amendment?
Well, I'll make the motion.
Someone to make the amendment.
I'll second the, I'll second.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
Moved by Counsel Khan.
I'll second.
By Counsel Argum. The amendment, as she stated in her presentation, I think was pretty clear. Discussion of the amendment before us. Seeing nothing, we can proceed to a roll call vote on the amendment.
Just for the record, Mr. President, so it's a motion to amend by Counsel Khan, seconded by Counsel Junta to add the language suggested.
I believe it's seconded by Counsel Argum.
Sorry.
Correct.
Thank you. And as suggested in the matter of committee on page five, which is 31F2, as read into the record by Counsel Khan.
Thank you. Is there any uncertainty among the members? Do you want any clarification? Then we'll proceed to a roll call.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar? Counsel Vogel?
Present.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Argum?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
That motion to amend passed. Nine, one, one.
Nine, zero, one. No, one.
Nine, one present, one absent.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Nine, one, one.
I thought it was yays, nays, present.
Nine, one, one.
We'll see. I learn something every night. Okay, now we have a motion that has been twice amended. I believe there's a second motion, a third motion. Counsel Khan?
Thank you, Council President. This one's a little bit, it's going to be a little bit more throughout the document, but I thought I could explain it really quickly and want to let you guys know that, again, in your copies, there's these little arrows throughout the whole document. And my apologies. I think I was trying to get to this at the joint meeting and again, I'm really, my apologies that this is coming here on the floor like this. But one of the things in terms of having that clarity and consistency was I looked at the MGL 94G and they no longer use the term marijuana business. And then looked at a couple of other zoning locations that had cultivation and the medical. And everyone's referring to establishments as the collective nomenclature. So I did, again, work with the planning director and who went ahead and modified the language so that we don't refer to businesses anymore, but we have the term establishments. So while I understand this is a little bit more to digest because it is in several locations throughout this document, I do think that it would behoove us to, in terms of having some type of a sound basis to have as we're going through this effort, that we do take time to go through it and make sure it's consistent and we're not being contradictory in how we're using the nomenclature for a marijuana establishment. So that would be my proposal is, and if you'd like me to walk through each section, if that would be helpful, we could do that as a body and take the time. But that's really the rationale behind it was, again, to be consistent. And so I hope, I look forward to any kind of conversation people want to have or if we want to walk through this. Thank you.
So I second the motion.
We had a second. Clerk has a point of order.
Mr. President, to cut to the chase, I think because Counsel Khan and I went over this document before, is it fair to say, Counsel Khan, that every time in this Ordinance 44 it mentions marijuana businesses, you've changed it to say, instead of businesses, establishments?
I will defer to the planning director, who actually, in some cases, had to modify, for example, in Section 31A. But I will, if you don't mind, he can show us and talk through what he had to do to make it work for some sections.
Mr. Port? Could you take the microphone, please?
The chair is correct. That's the substance of the amendment. There are a couple of locations, I think two, where I've made specific wording changes, just so the grammar of the sentence makes sense. But other than that, it's the, that's exactly the substance of this change. It would be every instance of marijuana business is replaced with marijuana establishment.
Stay right there for a minute, Andy, okay? There may be questions. Counsel Z? Yeah, actually, I do have a question. So I like the idea of homogenizing, but a couple of questions. One is, in here, is a medical facility an establishment?
It is under the state, yes. It's considered a medical.
In ours, though, because.
So we have actually a separate use category in the use table. If you look at, I think, the first page of the amendment, of the existing zoning, in that table, the use 803 is the medical facilities. So that has its own designation in there as a subcategory.
So the way that this is written, then, there's a lot of requirements here on licensing and so forth, would not apply to medical. Because when you use the term establishment now, you don't include medical. So the licensing, the permitting, all that stuff.
The procedures are the same.
But when you use the term establishment, it doesn't include medical now.
Right, but if you look at the, so in the table itself, in the beginning, use 803 is the medical establishments.
Right, you have that.
That is required to have a special permit, if you look at the table there.
But let me give you an example. So if you went to Section 31D, it says license requirements and conditions of use. It says, number one, marijuana establishment shall be properly licensed. That sounds reasonable. But shouldn't that apply to both marijuana establishments and medical marijuana, so that they're all this? We don't want to wipe out all the requirements for medical. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Which is why I think you had businesses in the first place was to have
Yep.
medical and establishment all under the umbrella of business, but what we're trying to do now is just to make the language a little bit nicer.
We could add in that section right there where it's triggered for the permit requirement. We could add medical and medical marijuana treatment centers, MMTCs.
Well, my concern is that you probably need to make that same change in like everywhere. You know, like, again, you go to 31G, a copy of its application and/or certificate, you know, from the CCC or DPA. You'd want that from. Yeah, I want that. Counsel, could we let someone else chime in on this?
Sure.
I think we could offer some clarification. Counsel Argum?
Yeah, I think all you need to do, so Counsel Khan started us off on it, is she's proposing to delete the definition of marijuana business. So all you have to do is add medical marijuana treatment center.
To establishment.
To the definition of establishment and then that you're done. That's all you got to do.
Okay. All right. One moment, Counsel Z. So let's digest this. Does the clerk understand that?
I do. I think we're talking about, that's same page five.
Yes.
And the definition of marijuana establishment.
Right, so if I may.
Counsel Argum?
So right now, as proposed, the amendment strikes the term marijuana retailer. All you have to do now is insert in its place, medical marijuana treatment center. I'll make that as a motion.
Second. So wait a minute, we have one motion on the floor already. Let's see, are we amending the motion? Might that be something that the sponsor of the original amendment accepts as a friendly modification to her?
And then.
All right. So that's a friendly modification to.
Counsel Tontar has to accept.
One moment. Okay. Accept them for the first and by the second?
Yep.
That's cleaner.
Counsel Argum, could you repeat that again?
Yeah. So at the bottom of, I don't have the page numbers, unfortunately, but it's the definition section, Roman numeral 31-b. The definition of marijuana establishment. Right now, on the second line of that definition, the term marijuana retailer is stricken. Insert at that same spot the following term, medical marijuana treatment center. And then they're all included, all categories of establishment.
That's on my copy, the bottom of page three, if you will.
Okay.
Yes, that's on mine.
Makes sense? Makes sense?
I think so. Repeat it again, Joe. 31E, that was parking. Yeah.
I'll repeat it one more time.
Please do.
At the bottom of page three, there are a series of definitions for this section. So bottom of page three, Section 31-b-boy, there is a definition of the term marijuana establishment means, and then it gives a whole list of things that it means. We are striking marijuana retailer. We are inserting in its place, medical marijuana treatment center as one of the types of medical, I'm sorry, of marijuana establishment. And that term, in turn, is defined on the next page.
Yes, it is. That's bullet 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, under the parking requirements of 31E parking requirements. Did you find that, Counsel?
Yep, it's there, too.
Okay. I believe that's what you meant. I was referring to Counsel Jenta. You had a puzzled look on your face.
No, I'm good.
You got, okay. My mistake. Counsel Z? So my other question, which was a follow-up, was so I like that idea because then we're homogenizing across all of them, but at the top, under purposes, we also define MMTC and establishments, although that's not a definition section. It looks like it's just a copy from the MGL. My concern is that marijuana establishment up there says for the adult, non-medical use of marijuana. So I just want to point out that we're, in our definition of establishment, we would be including medical. And up here at the top, it's, I don't even know why we have the, you know, these two definitions up here. We should, am I making any sense?
Yeah.
If I could speak to that?
It seems contradictory to have one definition. We just need an umbrella for everything. That's what we're trying to get to, but we're using the same terms they use. And I'm concerned there.
If I could, the purposes section is actually just a restatement, essentially saying whereas, essentially what the state statutes do. So the first one, if you look at the purposes section of this ordinance, the first one there is actually the state statute that enabled the medical marijuana treatment facilities first. Later on, we saw the allowance of the medical or the recreational establishments. So this purpose section is really just reiterating the fact that there's two separate statutes that were created for these types of uses.
Under chapter 941.
Does not impact the definitions and the rest of the ordinance. It's just stating the, it's sort of a whereas clause.
So I'm comfortable with that legally. It makes sense. I just am questioning the common sense of having marijuana establishment I just am questioning the common sense of having marijuana establishment at the top of the page and at the bottom of the page, saying two different things. That's all. I mean legally, I think if those are essentially the whereas clauses, they're not, you know.
And again, those are just from the statute, so that's why I don't suggest changing the language in those paragraphs.
Yeah. It's just in the preamble.
Okay. Is that acceptable to you? It is, and I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vogel?
Yes. If I may, so if you're gonna put in that language, why not just take the whole sentence from the use table and insert that whole thing? You only, medical marijuana treatment center or registered marijuana dispensary, but you know, as it states in the use table. Then that covers it all. Carries it all the way over there.
Port?
I have no objection to either instance of that. I guess I would say it doesn't really make a difference because if you look at the definition, I see what you're suggesting, which is that if you look at the definition section in, where it says marijuana establishment, the, oh, sorry, on the next page, marijuana, medical marijuana treatment centers, MMTC, it goes on to say also known as registered marijuana dispensary or RMD. So it is captured in the definition of that use. So I would say you could add that amendment if you wanted to, but it really won't make a difference legally. It will still be capturing. That's just because the state has used two different terms to define those businesses.
Just pointed out.
Thank you, Counselor. The clerk?
Mr. President, to Counselor Argum and Counselor Khan, so we then, for simplicity's sake, should be dealing with the original ordinance 44 in the packet, then we don't have to worry about all the multiple changes?
No, we do.
Counselor Argum?
Yeah, no, we do. There's two things going on. So what Counselor Khan put on our tables tonight is changes throughout the ordinance to get rid of the term marijuana business and use marijuana establishment. So you need that.
You want to keep that?
I want to keep that. I think we all do. And then the other is, but the definition of a marijuana establishment now has to add medical marijuana treatment center. That's what Counselor Zied was pointing out. And then I think we're covered.
Very good. Now, the purposes, that's just a preamble that hasn't the same...
The one that was placed on your desk.
That's it.
Is the one we're going from.
Yeah, we're gonna go from that one.
Okay. I don't see any forward browse, but perhaps there's something else matter that members would like to have clarification on. Counselor Tantar?
Just something that's itching to bed. So Chapter 94, Section 1, it's referred to in the definition of marijuana establishment, has this statement that says, and any other licensed marijuana business. So doesn't that cover medical marijuana? Is it already, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with redundancy, but I think it's already covered, isn't it?
Ms. Bender's. Counselor Argum?
Well, there's two problems. First of all, if a court ever tried to interpret this, they're gonna look at the original version to try to understand what we did when we changed it. And they're gonna see that medical marijuana treatment center disappeared, and they're gonna wonder why that happened. So to make it parallel, you want to put it back in somewhere. It was in the previous definition of a marijuana business. So it's much safer to put it in. But I mean, just to take your argument with, this is all the state's fault, frankly.
Yep.
They could have just defined marijuana, we could just define marijuana establishment as anything that's a marijuana establishment under 94G1. We could have written that. We didn't do it that way, so better stick with the program.
I concur. I guess I can't concur, can I? Further discussion. Is the clerk clear about what we're doing? Because you have to make an official record of what we're doing here.
Yes, I see it as a motion to approve as amended. There was a friendly amendment adding the medical marijuana treatment center in the definition section. It also contains the changes of the words, basically establishment, being added. And it also changes the NP to SP, as we've talked about. It also includes the 31F2 change, the original one by Counselor Khan.
Yes.
In essence, it is the one on the desk with the change to definition of marijuana establishment.
You've got it.
And the motion's on the floor as to approved as amended.
Okay.
Needing a roll call vote.
We will. Are there any other issues members would like to bring up at this time? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call.
Okay. Approval of ordinance 44, approved as amended. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Argum?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Vote of nine, one, one. Ordinance 44 passes first reading.
Thank you.
As amended.
As amended.
I believe there's something else to come out of committee?
Well, don't we go back to business and budget and finance now?
Yeah, we will in a moment.
Yeah.
There's another matter that I'd like to take up before. We've now acted on the four marijuana-related items. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We have.
Because we don't have another meeting scheduled, what I'd like to do at this time, because it relates to what we just did, select a date for a second meeting, which was the preference through a straw poll that members, unless they've changed their mind, and I don't think you can anymore, expressed at the planning and development meeting, the first of the two. And I'm gonna suggest four dates for an evening meeting for the purposes, and the, well, not quite the exclusive purpose, but the primary purpose of which would be to take second reading on those matters that need a second reading before this council goes out of session and is replaced by a new council. The dates I have in mind are Thursday, the 12th of December. That's Thursday later this week. Monday, the 16th, a week from tonight. Thursday, the 19th of December. Or Monday, the 23rd of December. Now, before we proceed on this, I would ask members, just through a show of hands, as I go through each of these dates, to tell me if you cannot make that date. Because we will need a quorum of eight members to act. Counselor Tantar, do you have a question?
Actually, I have a statement. I'd like you to take out the 23rd. It's Hanukkah.
Point well taken. I will take the 23rd out. Thank you for that observation. So we have three dates. Thursday, the 12th of this week. Monday, the 16th, a week from tonight. Or Thursday, the 19th. Please raise your hand if you cannot make the meeting. I understand this is going to be an inconvenience. If you cannot make a meeting this Thursday, raise your hand if you cannot. What's the date? 12th?
Thursday.
Tuesday. So that's out. Monday, the 16th, if you cannot make that meeting. It's viable. Fire, let's go. Thursday, the 19th, if you cannot make it. There you go. Process of elimination. Counselors, we will meet again on Monday, December 16th, for the primary purpose of dealing with the ordinances that require a second reading before the end of December. I will also suggest to you, at that time, if there are issues that you have not yet decided on bringing out of committee, and in conversation with at least one chair, that chair was uncertain about whether or not the members of that committee wanted to hold some things over or to allow them to die. On that night, we will also vote on carrying forward some issues from committees and allowing others to die. All right? So we're not going to do that tonight. We'll do that next week.
What time does this mean?
Good question. I think 7:30 is our, our working, you know, our habit. Is 7:30 acceptable to the members? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I'll ask the clerk to post that. And the public to understand the purposes of the meeting is confirmation of the ordinances that we've started on tonight, and a discussion and decision on which matters that are currently in committees that we're not acting on will die and which will be carried forward for the next session.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Under Rule 2A, could someone please move to waive the necessity to hand-deliver a notice since everybody's here?
So move.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Waiver the rules for the purposes of serving the needs of the clerk's office, administrative needs of the clerk's office. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So you won't have to hand-deliver them. We know what we're gonna be doing. For those of you who were very patient tonight, the 11 members of this council are right now being considered for work at Carl's Sausage Kitchen. Having expressed, you know, their expertise tonight. We will be in a one-minute recess, please. We're gonna return to the regular order. We have orders, ordinances. Put your microphones back on. I'm as guilty as anyone there. And we are at committee items, budget and finance. I think there's some other things, other than, some things other than marijuana that need to come up. Counselor Tantar?
Motion to receive and file Communication 112 Memo Ray Firebase EMS Cost Benefit Analysis.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Tantar?
Three to zero, to receive and recommend, to receive and file it. This is the communication on ambulance service in Newburyport. Doing so was contingent upon receiving a safe grant for staffing. We did not receive that grant, first of all. Secondly, I think if we do go further with this in the future, we would want a new cost benefit analysis.
Fair enough. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of receiving filing this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Counselor?
Motion to receive and file Communication 120 Central Communational Grant Award Letter.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Tantar?
Yes, this also, the recommendation of receiving and file was also a 3-0 vote. You know, just to refresh you, there was a $75,000 grant from the community preservation. $50,000 was awarded. $25,000 has not been given to the church. In committee, we asked through the city clerk, we asked KP Law whether they, what the prospects were for litigation to get that $50,000 back. KP Law didn't think it was, didn't feel they could recommend that we do that. And they also didn't think that we were obliged to give the additional $25,000. In addition, the planning department and the community preservation committee have changed the way that preservation restrictions are put into place such that before money is, before money is dispersed, the PR must be in place. So recommending receiving and file.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is received and filed. Counselor Tantar?
Motion to collectively carry to the next session, Order 132 CPC Fiscal Year 2020 Recommended Appropriations, in particular, Appropriation 9. Order 136 Full Attract Phase 2 Loan Order in Communication 189 CPC Revised Recommendation Fiscal Year 2020 Appropriations.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Once again, a 3-0 vote to recommend that this be carried over to the next session. We really wanted to try to get this done. We're missing some information, particularly, we're missing information on the design of the structure where bathrooms were, that's related to stands. So we'd like to get this done early in the next session, so we ask you to carry it forward.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. They are moved to the next session, carried over. Anything else?
Motion to approve Transfer 65 Free Cash 15.5K to Meeting Recording 15.5K.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I believe it was Counselor Zied. Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, once again, this is a 3-0 recommendation to approve. We did have some substantial discussion on this concerning why we have to pay $15.5,000. Actually, it's in a current contract. Administration negotiated this with the hub, Newburyport Communication Media Hub, and they, they said, look, in order to do this, which is the recording of ZBA and planning board meetings, we're gonna need some extra staff, we're gonna need some extra equipment. This 15.5 doesn't, sense in the committee was that we've been asking for this for a long time, we're very happy it's gonna take place, and the next budget year, we could talk about how it's financed.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's just for budget and finance, Mr. President.
Education?
Nothing to report. We got snowed out.
Great. General Government?
Nothing to report.
License and permits?
Motion to remove, motion to approve Communication 208.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Zied. Discussion, Counselor Vogel?
This was voted favorably, two to nothing, to members of the license and permit present. This is a renewal. We depend on the clerk to hear of any circumstances where we should not approve it or delug into it further. Not having received any, we're recommending approval.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed? Is there anything else, Counselor?
Nothing else.
That's it. Neighborhood and City Services.
Mr. President, if it's okay, motion to move one, Communication collectively, pardon me, Communications 194, 196, and 197 to our next session, as we just did budget and finance. I don't know what you want.
Fair enough. Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So just briefly, 194 and 196 are two communications, one from Counselor Tantar and one through the Department of Streets on Merrimack and High. As I reported to you briefly last week, we did have a good community meeting, we came up with some questions. We've since received responses, which is very much appreciated from the mayor's office, and Chief Coogan had a big part in responding to those, as well as the mayor, from what I understand. So it's great, but we just simply will not have time to get back to it this year. So next year's new and fresh-legged Neighborhood and City Services will continue that discussion. And then 197 is Phillips Drive. That was also an important communication. That community meeting that the mayor had scheduled, unfortunately, was also impacted by the snow, so presuming that that will get rescheduled. So in order to keep our process going, would like to ask my colleagues here to seek assent, to send it to the next session. So those three collectively, see you in 2020.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And?
One more. Motion to approve Order 162 Resolution Relating to Support for Parks Department in Conservancy Design and Construct an All-Inclusive Playground at the Bartlett Mall.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll just give the quick committee report, and then perhaps a speaker could elaborate. This came in as a late file last time. It's related to an effort to try and build a fully accessible playground, you know, at the Bartlett Mall, which is actually somewhat separate from the existing work, but I think would like to become part of that same endeavor with the basketball court and the other things that we've been doing. Committee met briefly with strong support, 2-0, and would like to ask you to join, and again, perhaps the War 3 council would want to add.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Shan?
Right. This was a resolution that was asked for by the organization that's funding the charity that is trying to raise money for the adaptable playgrounds throughout the city. So with the respect to the Bartlett Mall, making that our first 100% all-inclusive playground, it seemed like it was appropriate time for us to say that we're fully supporting it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else in committee?
That's it, Mr. President. I have to point out that since you have awarded Mr. Coogan the title of chief, we'll take up a collection at the end of this meeting, so we can have epaulettes installed on the shoulders of all of his jackets.
Chevron's.
Maybe with some stars on them. All right. Planning and Development.
Motion to remove Order 161 Preservation Restriction 25 Water Street.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Zied, it was. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve as amended in committee.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Agaman.
So everybody has a copy of the amendments, save Counselor Zied was participating in our meeting tonight, and he added an insertion, which you should also have on your desk. It's one paragraph, it's a whereas clause. So first, let me give you the big picture. You'll remember that a year ago, we prevailed upon the NRA to add deed restrictions when they granted the property to the custom house. We've granted various monies under the Community Preservation Act, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea here is to, and I'm a sponsor of this too, is to adopt a new preservation restriction, which will be perpetual, and supersede an earlier one that was done in 2002 and recorded in 2003, that was held by the Newburyport Historical Commission. And then another one that was done in 2013, I think it is, by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And because the Massachusetts Historical Commission, our historical commission and the city council are all going to sign this, we can do that. So what does it, what does it amount to? First of all, on the whereas clauses, it references that deed specifically by its document number, so everyone knows what we're talking about. It also adds baseline documentation. So they're actually photographs. I don't believe you have them in front of you, but they are in the packet that you originally got. A series of photographs of the features of the building that we want to preserve, and the parties all believe are significant to the building's integrity. They're both exterior and interior. So one of the changes we made in committee, you'll see, is to add the word "and" interior. There were some interior features that were already documented, thanks to the suggestion of our historical commission. Specifically, for those of you familiar with the building, the hanging stairs, which are pretty special, and the marble floor, which is a black and white checkerboard. And those would be protected under this. Be advised that the previous, or the ones that are on title now, the preservation restrictions for 2002 and 2013 speak to both interior and exterior, but they don't inventory carefully. So it is a limited number of interior features, but they are this time inventoried, and we know what they are. Then the amendment that our committee adopted three nothing earlier tonight, proposed by Sharif Zied, had to do with the artifacts, the actual collection. So normally, when we do these preservation restrictions, we only care about the building, the real estate, and that's typically the way lawyers think. This is unusual situation, because you'll recall, when all the debates we've had about this building, it's about the importance of the collection. And in fact, the 2002 deed restriction, preservation restriction, and the 2013 both refer to protection of quote artifacts. Problem is, they don't define what those artifacts are. And that leads to a drafting problem. Suffice it to say, the solution that Counselor Zied suggested, we thought was elegant, and Doug Muir, the chair of the board, was at our meeting and thought it was okay to say that the whereas clause would provide both parties, this agreement acknowledged that there are various artifacts that deserve protection, and that both parties agree to work together in good faith to identify, document, and protect said artifacts as soon as is reasonably practicable. And we thought that was well taken, because we wanted to show that the parties recognize there's more work to do, that we haven't forgotten this issue, but that it's not going to hold up this preservation restriction. Now specifically, to give you some of the flavor of the detail, over the last, you know, hundreds of years, the collections of the city and the collections of the Historical Society of Old Newburyport, now known as the Museum of Old Newbury, I think, they've gotten a little mixed up. And so, and then you have on top of that, the federal building was closed around World War I, and went into private ownership for a good 50 years. So I believe, based on what Mr. Bill Harris, who has been a former member of that custom house group, told me, I think we actually have the measuring scales that at one time were in the custom house, in our display cabinet in the hallway here. There's no inventory. We asked Doug about this. They actually don't have an inventory of what's in the building right now. Still less, do they know what belongs to whom? And the same is true of the city. Doug and his wife volunteered, I think with our clerk, to go through the basement a couple years ago, and there were all kinds of goodies down there. You see the problem. And we did not want to hold up the preservation restriction, because we don't know how soon it's reasonably practicable to sort this all out. We just wanted the parties to recognize in the document that we have our eye on the ball, we're going to revisit it, and most of the, most of the interaction is going to be between the HIST, Historical Society, who has lent some of their material to the custom house to display there, and the custom house. But the city, as grantee of this document, has a dog in the fight. So that was the next series. Then you go to page three. We had to clarify under 2B Boy that although we're wiping out the 2002 deed, preservation restriction, all the other deed restrictions that we fought for last year, there were six of them, remain in effect. And if there's any contradiction between this preservation restriction and those provisions of the deed, the deed controls. We are not reopening the deed. So things about if the property's ever sold, or they try to change the use of it, and blah blah blah, we don't have to revisit that. Let's see. On page four, we accidentally found a typo. So another amendment was at 4, 4B Boy Romanet 4. We were talking about additions, and it's a prohibited, no additions and/or outbuildings may be attached to the building without prior approval of the, and it said grantor, that's wrong. It's the grantee. We're the grantee, the city of Newburyport. So for example, if they wanted to add, you know, a gas station on the back, they can't without our approval. That's, that's just a typo, and I hope it's the only one. That's the substance of this. Most of the red line, because I wanted the council to know everything that I did, is formatting. That's all, so that it can be in recordable form. Now as far as status, I don't know that the city solicitor has given its final, you know, look see on this yet. The historical commission is done with it. A version was sent to the Massachusetts Historical Commission on the 25th of November, but they're going to need to see these changes if you choose to adopt them. Why is it important? It's important because they can't get the money until we approve this. So with that, if there are questions, we can take them on the committee, and Mr. Muir is here as well.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes, thank you. I just had a quick question with regard to the artifacts, and who, I appreciate the effort in keeping the eye on the ball. Who follows up? How does that, how does that continue? Is there a reporting thought of, or so forth?
Well, it, you know, technically, because we're acting by and through our historical commission, it would really fall to Glenn Richards as chair. But, you know, it was really a War Two citizen, Bill Harris, that alerted me to remember this, and I think all of us could be involved. I don't know that it's limited to Glenn.
Thank you. Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, I had similar lines of questioning, and I was wondering, is there, typically, when you are going to identify or document, which I think is a great idea, is there any precedence for a similar type of organization, like a museum, to file something with like archives and libraries here, or something so that people are looking for items, there is some tracking capability? So just a suggestion, if that's something that, a follow-up document would be done for these artifacts?
Well, maybe we could allow Mr. Muir, Mr. Muir to respond. I mean, we were basically assuming that there's precedent for this, but we don't, we haven't had time to identify a precise one.
Mr. Muir, would you like to approach the microphone?
Thank you. As far as the inventorying and identification of collection items, we have somewhere north of 3,000 to 4,000 items in the collection, 70% of which are documents, which, if you've been to the museum, you probably have never seen. So it's a big job. The first step, from our point of view, is to identify with the Museum of Old Newbury, which items came from the Marine Society, and where they are, and whether they're gifts or loans, whether they're subject to restrictions or not. Following that, we get into the issue of making sure that all of the collection items are accessioned. Right now, in the attic, we have accessioned collection items, we have non-accessioned collection items, and we have stuff, which people have dropped off over the years, and it's still there. And is it part of the collection or not? So it's a big job. And our, fortunately, our new executive director is a collections person. She spent 20 years managing the MIT Museum collection. So it's very much something that's front burner for her. She's been working with Susan Edwards at the Old Newbury Museum to begin the Marine Society inventory, I guess I'd call it. So it's underway, as far as we're concerned. And just as my wife Cynthia worked with Rich Jones in the basement, you're all welcome to come and work in the attic.
It's an interesting place. A couple of years ago, when my wife was volunteering, found a document signed by one of our first presidents, that nobody knew was there. It's remarkable. Might I also suggest something, I'm taking liberties from the chair, that you consult with the archivist at the public library. Might have some shortcuts that would help you identify and properly catalog and preserve the items that are, that are available to you there.
Well, as far as the accessioning is going, that, we know how to do that. We've been doing that along the way. We use the past perfect software, which is typically the museum software that you use. You identify the items, when it came, where it came from, restrictions, so that, and you see this, if you go to a museum, you see a bunch of numbers and dates and whatnot on an object or near an object that's being exhibited or displayed. So that, that's not complete, but that's the, as I say, we, we know how to do it, it's just a question of horsepower.
Yep. I understand. Sure. Thank you. Counselor Agaman, again.
Yeah, just three final points, because, so you can put it on videotape and wrap it up. So I neglected to say that I'd gotten an email from the executive director of the Maritime Society, Joan Whitlow, describing these efforts that she's making with Susan Edwards. So I have that in writing, and I can put it on record. Second, you know, we're in good shape in Newburyport, as far as amateur and professional historians. I think we, we have the brainpower. The third thing is to clarify for people who get confused, as I did. So in 1968, the Newburyport Maritime Society Incorporated was founded in order to brainstorm about a museum, and then that came to fruition in the Custom House Museum. The Marine Society, not maritime, but Marine Society, was an 18th and 19th century group of ship captains. So when we talk about the Marine Society collection, we mean the actual doodads that these guys brought back from all over the world, and that is sort of the most, I wouldn't say the core of the collection necessarily, but the best-known collection of things. And so that's, don't get those two confused.
And stuff.
And then the stuff.
Further discussion. Yes.
Mr. President, just a point of clarification. Counselor Agaman, the whereas clause would go where?
I would propose, well, what we did in below, I proposed this, and we, page two, in between the last, right before the last whereas clause, so before the one that reads, whereas the commission is authorized to accept.
In, before that?
Yeah, I would stick it in right there. That's, that's what we voted on.
And you have the other change, presumably?
The other, the other change is on page, yeah, 4B, so that's page four. 4B, and then Romanet 4. You see where it reads, no additions and/or outbuildings?
I have that one, and then it's the previous one that I don't seem to have.
The previous one you don't have.
Got to be 2B, correct?
2B. No, you should have it. It says it's the last paragraph, as stated above, comma, it is the intention. You have that one? You have that one?
On page three?
Page three. Three paragraphs up from the bottom. It says, as stated above, it is the intention of the grantor and grantee that this restriction supersede and replace. Do you get all that?
I don't, but maybe you could give it to me.
Really? No, you should have it. That was in the packet.
In the interest of getting to an end point tonight, could the chairman and the city clerk put their heads together to make sure the language is correct, or the record is correct? I'm sure I have it now. Yeah. He's just, oh, I have it now. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have what you need, Rich?
I do.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Further discussion on this Order 161 on the preservation restriction. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else in committee, Counselor?
Do we take a roll call, because it's property? Yes.
I think it's a good practice. I don't think you have to.
On a preservation restriction.
You know, I, I'm going to ask that we take a roll call on this. I think that's a good suggestion. Thank you, Counselor. I think because it is property, there are some restrictions. This is Order 161 Preservation Restriction as amended. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar? Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Johnta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Connell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and development is done. Public safety.
Yes. Motion to receive and file Order Number 94.
Second. Receiving file Order 94. Discussion. Been seconded by Counselor Tontar, I believe. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, this was put in to initiate the discussion about changing the direction of Green Street and other traffic patterns around the garage. We had a discussion at TSAC with the sponsor. I've spoken, I've spoken to the sponsor, and he's okay with us receiving it finally. So it's two to nothing.
Fair enough. Further discussion. Now hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Motion to approve Order Number 145 Snow Emergency Parking, Greenleaf Street.
Second. Seconded by Counselor Jenta. Counselor Devlin?
So this was discussed over several meetings with DPS and Fire, and the mayor's office was there, and the sponsor. This is originally Green, Greenleaf Street. It started out in TSAC when the idea was floated about building a new, someone wanted to fund a new basketball court at the old Kelly School parking lot. That would take away snow parking, so now the idea was try to find another place for people who rely on that to park during snow emergencies. Greenleaf Street was very quickly determined to be not a good place for it, because it's so narrow. Auburn Street was discussed at TSAC, and now it's come back. So this was approved two to nothing to be moved to, but it was as amended, and the amendment was on Auburn Street from Vernon to pole number?
Nine.
Nine. Which is how DPS wanted to do it, on the westerly side, and with the cars removed 12 hours after the snow emergency. It also has an expiration date. It was amended to have an expiration date of April 30th. I'm going to let the ward council talk a little bit more about that.
So let me be clear, you're reporting it out as amended?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Shan?
Sure. Thank you. This is basically trying to help out the folks that have been parking at the Bartlett Mall all these years, and the city agreed to, we tried this once in one section of the city on Auburn Street, and we agreed, I did speak to some of the neighbors who had some concerns. We hopefully have addressed the concerns, and they've all been invited to the Thursday night meeting with DPS. If it doesn't work out, we will switch. We can certainly do amendments, but we just need to see if this is going to work first, so, thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess it's done. Anything else, Counselor?
Yes, motion to approve Order 146 Restricted Parking, Merrimack Street at Ashland Street as amended.
Second. Moved and seconded in discussion.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Try to find this here.
Try to find this here. What did I say it was? Order 146? Well, of course, that didn't come up. There we go. All right. So we had several lively discussions about this, one of which the sponsor also participated. And so it was suggested by the business there that maybe, they suggested a compromise, because they do use it, and their customers use it. I stopped by the business twice, I used it, I drive by it a lot, and I haven't seen a lot of people parking there. But to prevent people from parking, leaving their car there for the business, the repair shop, from preventing them from doing that overnight, the business suggested make it 30 minutes. So that was the amendment that was approved in committee. So, Mr. Clerk, instead of, and you weren't available, so follow, see if this is accurate. Instead of section 13-168, it would be 13-174?
Sounds right. That's the 30-minute section?
Yeah. And then it's, well, it's the restricted, it's parking with restrictions.
Right.
And then it would say, "Add the following new road to the table of streets or portion of streets upon which no person shall park any vehicle," and then we're going to delete, you know, as follows with additions, you're going to delete that and put in, "During the times indicated below." Then we can leave the italicized and double-underlined. And then in the italicized below, where it says Merrimack Street, and says, "On the southern side, starting at the intersection of Ashland Street and running a westward direction for a distance of 60 feet, comma, for longer than 30," oh, no parking will be permitted for longer than 30 minutes. Sorry, I'm getting used to writing with my finger. Basically, it makes this a 30-minute parking space. It came out two to nothing.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Zied.
Just quickly, I'm going to oppose, I just, I've always been opposed to proliferation of parking restrictions outside of our downtown. I just don't know how enforceable it is. I'm not convinced also that this intersection is unique enough. I mean, honestly, every intersection off of Merrimack, Water and High are all terrible because all the buildings were built up to the corner. That's just how things prevailed. And so on those grounds, you know, I have reservations, I had reservations about Auburn Street, but that's an exceptional situation with the Mall. This one, this doesn't seem exceptional enough, and I did sit through some of those enjoyable committee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, I support this amended version. I mean, I get a lot of complaints on the bottom of Ashland from a number of different people. I want to repeat that, a number of different people, especially trying to turn left there. Also in committee, and with the ward floor council-elect, who's civil engineer, and the public safety chair also looked at it. If you examine it, the curb in front of Phil and Sons looks like it doesn't line up with the curb off the Ashland. And we'll have the opportunity, when Merrimack Street is repaved, perhaps to narrow the street there, which I think would go a long way to resolving the problem. So I support this, but I look for more improvements in the future.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Jenta?
Just to add a little bit of color to this, what makes this corner unique is the auto, the auto repair shop on the corner. They own a ton of land around their property. They showed us their maps. They actually park cars all around the corner, which looks like it's parked on the sidewalk, but actually it's parked on their land. So when you have the building, a car, and then the car parked in the zone, we're talking about 30 minutes, when you come to the end of the street, when you look to the left, you are looking at two cars that definitely block your view. But when we spoke with the owner of the business, he said, "That's really a spot that we want people to come and go. You drop off your car, you come into the office, you tell us what's going on, and then we move the car around back." And of course, we don't want a car parked there overnight at all. So by making it 30 minutes, it does allow parking enforcement or the police to make sure that nobody is parked there overnight, and that it is a spot that's turning over. So I would hope you would join us in approving this.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One note.
Motion, I actually changed my mind. Motion to, I have to take it back, I ought to go. Motion to remove, and I have to be able to read it, Communication number 198, letter regarding middle street parking curb cut.
Second. Moved and seconded.
We took it out in the consent agenda.
Yeah. The middle street parking curb.
Remove.
Out, in, out.
Bring it, yep. Motion to remove.
Motion to remove. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to carry it over to the next city council session.
Second. Moved and seconded, to carry it over. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's fair. Anything else, counselor?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I was afraid you'd say.
Motion to receive and file order 151, amendment to our resident parking zone, which is Harris Street.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
It was already out. I think I said motion received and filed.
Motion received and filed. I'm sorry, I was looking elsewhere.
But I'm okay. Stay with that. Then it's motion to approve Communication 209, frigid fiber.
Second. Moved and seconded, approve motion, Communication 209. Discussion, Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, this is, I talked to Bob Manning. We had the exact same conversation we had last year. This is his 20th year running it between the Rotary and the Winners Circle Running Club. He, the only difference is it's now completely on the rail trail, other than a little space from Mark Ritchie's driveway or parking lot to the top of the rail trail. Goes down to the rail trail, goes down to Cashman, goes to the toll building, and turns around and comes back. They have all their police sign-offs. They have one copy in our package that you can't read, but that is the marshal's signature. And they are going to get us a clean copy of that that we can see. He was in Florida, and still is, so he's going to get someone to bring us a clean copy. And that's a condition of the license approval from two to nothing. We also have, need an updated insurance binder. They pay their insurance for the next year, December 15th, so they'll have it December 15th, and that's a condition of him getting his license as well. And that's it. Came out two to nothing.
And the city is named as the insured? I assume?
Yeah, if it's not, they will, that, yes.
Yes.
There's a certificate over. Yes.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to, what are we doing, approving?
Yes.
Yeah, approve Communication 210.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Got to hear Counselor Tantar's second. Counselor Devlin, discussion.
Both members of the committee thought we had already done this last meeting, so if we did, we did, but Counselor Zied has checked the minutes, and it was just sent to our committee. So this is the interfaith candle lighting. It has always taken place since I've been on the city council. I have heard no complaints, and it was recommended two to nothing.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's it, on public safety.
Thank you. Public utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to send Communication 206 to the 2020 session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Yep. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rules?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Good of the order. I want to thank the counselors for their diligence in preparation for tonight's meeting. It was complicated. It was, at times, heated. Thank you for your forbearance, and again, your good preparation and cogent debate. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.